Two oh two P M. I'd like to call to order the Georgetown Divide Public Utility District Regular Meeting, Board of Directors. Please take role.
Director Stoneville.
Present.
Director Seaman.
Present.
Director Thornbrough.
Here.
Director Saunders.
Present.
And.
Here. Director Thornbrough, would you kind of lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Be glad to.
Everybody reading? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good to see everyone here today. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
We'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Director Saunders makes an emotion to adopt the agenda and Director Siemens seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
If you have one, if you can make one adjustment to the agenda, um, if that, please, the board, I would like to move a presentation to a former director from a six B, six C, and look, move it up to, uh, right after the consent calendar. So that would be kind of, uh, moving four and five. You'd have to like to approve that, uh, slight amendment.
I take back my motion and, uh, approve the amendment with the, uh, moving of, uh, item six C to after, uh, the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All in favors?
Aye.
Motion passes. Not opposed. Pursuant to the Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, four, point three, the Brown Act, members of the public shall be afforded the opportunity to speak on any agenda item. The board president will call for public comment on each item presented. Those wishing to address the board on a matter that is not on the agenda and with the jurisdictional authority of the district may do so during the public forum portion of the agenda. Follow the procedures below for speaking during the public forum or public session. Public numbers, excuse me, the public members desiring to provide comments must raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the board president. Speak from the podium and begin by stating their name. If participating via teleconference, dial nine, star nine, to indicate you would like to speak. President will call upon you by addressing you by name or phone number indicated. Comments must be directed only to the board. No disruptive conduct shall be permitted at any time at any board meeting. Persistent in disruptive conduct shall be grounds for summary termination of that person's privilege of any addressed by the board president. There is a five-minute time limit for speaker and twenty minutes in total. The board is not permitted to take action on these items addressed under the public forum. Finally, the board president is responsible for maintaining order in the meeting. The floor is now open to the public. Ms. Neely.
Oh, I just want to, you know, yeah. I'm asking Rita Pastor, the topic of the forum, and she shows the ballot, official ballot numbers in the board pen um, in the election office, certified by Ken Smith, December second, twenty twenty-two. However, the numbers on the board packet last December were not agreed, they're all different. And it's a, it's implied in the board packet that these are official numbers and everybody certified that. However, Garden Valley was happy to note that Bob Stovall got a lot of votes, he fifty-seven numbers under Saunders. And on the board packet, he's listed as the third runner-up, or however you want to count him. Now, Donna received more votes than Stovall. If you look at the official numbers from the election office, Stovall is only forty-seven votes below Saunders and Donna is below that. And I'm off the grid, of course, and none of the numbers are right, whether it's voted right in, me, or the total. So the official numbers come from the election website. And I'm concerned that apparently nobody checked or intended to give Stovall the recognition and Garden Valley was really pleased that their representative won a lot of votes. And I'm concerned that you would have a jury for a judge coming and given, administered the oath with figures that are not accurate. So you need to have a copy and I don't expect an answer at the moment, but definitely Garden Valley knows that Stovall was second to account because there was a Gazette article on December twenty-ninth that did a nice not, December twenty-ninth, then the swearing-in, November seventeenth, they had a long article which listed Saunders first and gave a nice interview, and then Stovall, the second person, with a nice interview, and then Donna also with a nice interview. But they clearly indicated in the Gazette that, that Bob Stovall had enough voters to be just runners-on.
Okay.
And I think they would be concerned to think that their will was ignored.
Noted.
I would just say, uh, we can, uh, uh, adjust the numbers accordingly. We'll, we'll do, uh, the final numbers from the registrar and we will adjust the resolution to reflect, uh, whatever the registrar says in the future.
Okay, and the problem is to use Ken Smith's election person seal and everything all the way through that process of administering oath as if those are the accurate figures. And the resolution also said that our draft act.
Kim Smith sent us those seals. Those were sent by, by her office.
Right, but she didn't know that you would be using them with numbers that weren't accurate.
And, yes, you're, I will, like I said, we will update the numbers. It doesn't change the results. So the, on the seals, on the oaths, it doesn't state the numbers. It states that a person was elected. So we can adjust who received the correct amount of votes, but again, it does not change the end result. So we will, we will adjust the resolution to according, uh, to the registrar.
And if Bob Stovall had a lot of the, from Garden Valley, it's curious to me that it was not on any committees except ones. And I think you could have, you know, more additions. Garden Valley needs to be represented and the records are cool, they're fine. But you have only one community representing most of the divide, and now you have somebody from Garden Valley representing.
Thank you, Bonnie. Noted. Anyone else? Cherie?
Can he looks right out? The, um, can we get something straightened out on the website as far as the, um, uh, MP four players? Two meetings ago, I mentioned that there are like ten to twelve, uh, megabytes. Now somebody's only putting the, is putting the video in and that's six hundred and eighty-nine megabytes. There's no audio on the October, November, there's video. And then Jessica actually told me she was going to be recording the MP three. Remember you told me? Okay, but the, okay, so, but they're not, it's not put on there.
Don't mind that sound later.
It's now receiving. It's recording.
Okay, but they're not being put on the website. So I mean, I don't care if you put the video on there or the MP four, but the MP three.
Okay, we'll, we'll get it uploaded.
Anybody else present? Zoom? Okay. Like to get, um, Consent Calendar, move over the minutes and regular meeting, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have what? I was ready afterwards. We had one adjustment. It was already made prior to, uh, to this meeting. It's not in your packet, but it was, it is amended as the packet that's posted. There was an oversight of a couple of words and I would just like to make an adjustment on page five of eleven. Uh, states El Dorado Laughco, the words are at the ultimate special district commissioner. Uh, it should have read El Dorado Laughco adds the alternate special districts committee, the commissioner, that would be in reference to Director Saunders. So that has been adjusted to the minutes and I believe was still fit with the consent calendar to be amended unless there are other, uh, uh, issues that are being if you do have to raise another issue, we do have to pull it and vote on it separately.
Yeah, I would recommend it, the number twelve.
So, hold, hold on. If it's under consent, we have to pull, get to make a motion to pull item number A before we make any other amendments. I recommend we pull item A and make an adjustment. So that's fine. You can now vote on consent calendar A or B. And then we can discuss consent calendar for A and approve it after we receive comment from Director Stovall.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve consent calendar item four B.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is to approve the minutes I stated.
No. For, uh, district teleconference meetings during the period, February one through February twenty. Any opposed? Motion's approved.
Now you can, uh, state your correction to the consent calendar, uh, approval of the minutes.
Thank you very much for that. It's just the very last item on number thirteen on page eleven, eleven. It says the next regular meeting will be on Valentine's Day.
Okay, yeah, we can adjust that. Since you guys see. So with the, uh, with the corrected of the, uh, page five of eleven and page eleven, I believe people make a motion to, uh, uh, accept the amended minutes.
Yeah, there are some typos. I didn't go through them specifically, so. So I noticed a couple.
You'll have to be more specific.
Well, I have to go through it again. There is, so if you want to look at it, it's.
We will, we will address any typos.
I get a motion to accept, uh, meeting minutes with the amendment.
You have, you have a motion from Director Stovall.
The second.
Yeah, the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Motion passes with the amendment for meeting minutes, uh, approval of minutes for December thirteenth.
Now I think you can, uh, go to the amended agenda portion.
Okay. Six C, yeah. General managers report.
And at this point, I'd just like to offer a presentation to, uh, our former director, uh, Jerry Stewart. Um, if you, uh, I think we'll make some, make some photos if you guys would like. If you'd like to do that.
Why don't you ask, why don't you ask Jerry if he wants a photo?
Jerry doesn't try anymore.
Doesn't get a vote anymore.
Sorry, Jerry, I tried.
All right, Jerry, you gotta, you gotta stand up. I'm sorry. But they're so small compared to you. There will have been spoken. You'd like to come around, Mr. President? Yeah, we have a few nice things for you. There we go, there we go. All right. So, uh, what is being presented for the record is a plaque that states, uh, Mr. Stewart's, uh, dedication to the district in his bold stance as being a board of director member.
You got a really good shot on the TV, Jerry.
One more, one more, one more, one more. This is a little small gift from, uh, the board and the staff. And it's, uh, I will, we'll read it. It's, uh, in, in recognition of, uh, Director Stewart's, uh, long and illustrious golfing career. So for as many years, may the course be with you. All right.
This is, this is gonna be on the, on the journal and the desert.
Uh, sure, yes. And then, uh,
We give him the vote.
I'll just hand this one over to you. This is a, this is another certificate of recognition and my Christmas card to you. Unfortunately, Director Stewart had COVID the last time we were doing this, so we didn't, uh, we didn't do this last time.
Well, I have.
Future service.
I have a brief speech here and.
Please, please.
All right.
And then it's.
Well, I just wanted to tell you to everybody on the board, this has been one of the guest boards I served on, and you know that I served back in the seventies. Uh, I was only twelve. We had some really good boards, but this board here is, is, is in. And I really enjoyed working with you guys. And I'm leaving here knowing that it's in good hands. So thank you for all the recognition and the plaques. And our staff is out of sight. I appreciate them too. So thank you again. We're gonna pick up our coats and go ahead and find it. Turn home.
You're gonna chain out. Get your votes.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. Oh. Well, your ten minutes as well. Oh, yes, especially that one part.
Yeah. And, uh, Jerry, you also have another certificates coming from, uh, Senator Dolly, so they're still trying to get it out, but once that comes to you, we'll get that to you. So it'll be, uh.
Bring, bring your, yeah, if you want, bring a tie, you'll have the opportunity to bring a tie there.
We'll have the camera crew here too.
And we also want to thank, uh, Cindy for letting, uh, letting us have him. Our secretary.
Exactly.
What is she, uh?
And coach.
She do a job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, she's, you've got a certificate too.
Yeah.
Remember your neighbors. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck, everybody.
Okay.
Take care, Cindy.
Okay, okay. Moving on, um, financial reports.
Yes, uh, this time we will take any questions on any of the financial reports, five A through B. Uh, just a note for any, uh, public or questions. This is up through the final close of November thirtieth. So, uh, anything that has happened, uh, in December is not included. That will be included at the end of January. So I'd like to turn it over to Jessica. She has any bit of presentation or if you can answer any question.
I do not have a presentation, um, unless you want me to just read. I mean, it's the, the front is boilerplate. The budget to actuals graph, um, bar chart has been updated through November thirtieth. So it's easier to read. Yeah. I hand it over to the board.
Any comments from the board?
My only comment is I would appreciate, I think, if there's, when, when it's appropriate, want to have some kind of tutorial on the website for the crowd.
We're working on it.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, I hear that. We, we apologize. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Director Saunders.
I forgot what I was gonna ask. Oh, um, just, uh, for the capital improvement projects, I know we don't have a place for it now, but, um, if we could, uh, in any reports, anything that we're doing in addition, like any, uh, anything from mosquito fire that we may have taken from the, if we can have that update on, anything that's been taken now.
So just, uh, to address that, we plan to have a, a budget presentation in the next board meeting. And if we have any amendments to the budget, we have planned to, uh, uh, present those at that time. We're, we're gonna kind of present a budget to actuals for all the different departments where we're over, where we're under. Um, it'll be a good chance for us to get a handle on all of the different, uh, funds, all the different accounts and to see where we maybe misbudgeted, where we need to, uh, adjust for next year. And then this would kind of set us up for going into budget season because we've already started as a staff to work on, uh, next fiscal year. So we will definitely include that.
Public.
Um, what's the status of the annual audit? Are they still doing it? Yarn where they're done by now?
Audit.
Okay, I guess. Bunch of it done.
The audit is in progress right now. We are, uh, we've actually been working on it pretty diligently the last few weeks, months. And, uh, I think we're just kind of finalizing the last little bits of knowledge that they're asking for. It's, uh, unfortunately, we had to go back into old, uh, check registers from before myself or Jessica was deployed here to, to, uh, get information that they were looking for of when we purchased up, how we deposited stuff. So that has been taking up quite a bit of our time.
And what's the name of the CPA? I couldn't find A or something?
Sorry.
The CPAs are L S L, but the auditor is M A Z E.
Crazy.
And A and. And Y and Z. No, M A Z E.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. Well, and then they got started late. You had to.
Correct.
On it.
Well, they were behind. They had other previous responsibilities as well that they had to finish up before they could start ours.
So what's going on with the Tyler program? Is anything getting straightened out on that?
It's getting cleaned up. I'm approving a lot of journal entries for the, for the CPAs, so they.
For the previous year?
Right, well, from the start. So from implementation, because it were entered incorrectly. I mean, in the there's kind of a portal where when the journal entry, entry is entered, someone else approves it. So those checks and balances, so it's filled right now.
Because last year it was the CPAs that were doing your job. I mean, that's where all these errors went. So E Bailey. I mean, it's like, we paid them to do a good job and they didn't do it.
So we are.
Back that far.
Jessica has been doing a lot of that. She's been working with our CPA now, L S L. And, uh, uh, she had been working on inputting those journal entries with their assistance so that moving forward, that can be Jessica inputting those journal entries.
So how can the yearly auditors do a proper audit if that stuff isn't completed?
Because it's from last fiscal year and it's, they have picked specific categories, specific uh, accounts that they would like to look at.
Yeah, they only look at a couple.
Yeah, so that's what we're getting. They, they have, they selected their, uh,
Oh, so you have to look at those.
Yeah, they selected their handful. Uh, they sent us a letter that we had to send out to all the different, uh, vendors. So you know, I think it was about ten to fifteen vendors is what they, they wanted to, to really take a deep dive into. And so we had to get all that information back from those vendors. And then as I was stating, we had to go back into our old uh, deposit registers. And I mean, unfortunately, they were boxes of, of bundles of papers that we had to then reorganize them. I would invite you, if I could, back into Jessica's office because there is a pile of, of check registers or not, a deposit register, you mean? That we've had to go through individually to find all the information that we're looking for. So our goal is to make it much more organized in the future. And I would say Jessica's doing a magnificent job of organization at this time.
Well, the work wasn't anybody in there for having a recount. So it was kind of, okay, so the checks, thirty-four, one thirty, Nathan Thomas, like five thousand dollars. Now, is that an employee or?
We don't have anybody named.
And it was thirty-four, one oh-three, five thousand, whatever.
Are you on the checking board?
Yeah. Thirty-four, one thirty-eight. You paid it every month, you know, when? I don't even know. I mean, I don't even know.
No, it's, he's, that's, for some reason, the checks are made out to him personally, but it's, it's a company. I have the same question.
I mean, Mike T. doesn't know it in case that's that doesn't, doesn't, you don't recognize.
Well, I just don't retain that specifically. Okay, gee.
Oh, Nathan Paul, that, I don't know. That's, um, that's the, uh, quarterly report for, um, Waisman.
Oh, wait, yeah, okay.
So I said, yeah, yeah, that's what it is.
I knew it was, yeah, it was very strange because in the actual Tyler system, it's all of the company information, but the K two.
Yeah, he started with Western.
So thirty-four, one fifty, InfoSend for twenty-two hundred.
InfoSend is our new, um, billing printer.
But they're doing the billing?
We were doing A Applied.
Okay.
Um, which was a gentleman named Ray out of Sacramento. So we would send him a PDF of the bills. He would print envelope stuff on and mail them out. And we're actually saving about twelve hundred dollars a month in InfoSend.
Okay.
Which is a corporation now instead of a mom and pop.
And then Eric Tyler's a, a employee?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, thirty-four, two, two, oh, Surge Pros, six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Surge Pros is.
Just staffing.
Yeah, they, they are, they're there are, are outside, uh, staffing. We have, we had a, uh,
Well, I thought that was Tampa or Antson.
So they switch titles.
Okay, so these are, this is a salary for the.
It is a, yes, a salary.
And then Jan Jarrow, San Jarrow.
So Jarrow is our grant writer.
And the only other thing is that there's missing check, like, um, thirty-four, one ninety-two.
Some of those could be for depositing in the bank. We have to, we're going to just change signatures.
But don't you think you should list the, the, the check or, or if they're void, they should say void for proper accounting? Cause there's four more, thirty-two to thirty-five bins.
Yeah, that's.
Cause they used to list the voided check.
It could be oversight.
Yeah, they're listed in the back, but they're not listed by check number. They're just listed where, how many checks were voided, not which ones.
And I think there's two of them. It says two, but there's, um, five.
And this would be just for December.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm going by. But there's, um, one got reversed and that was what's concluded as a void. Like you're there's one that was voided and that's what this dollar net was. Cause they, they were one in and one out. But the others, the other five are not listed. And they used to be listed if they were actually voided.
I'm gonna see if I can add that to the back of this report.
Cause they used to, you did it in the first part of the year.
It might do it if I do from Ju- July first present, but not if I do monthly. It might just be a box I have to check and then change the report.
And so I remember there was like twenty of them one month. Questioned it, why there was something voiding.
It's usually just made out to the wrong person.
No, they don't spell or issue.
Yeah, or it prints wrong.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
On the staff report that I guess Boy and Lina did once about for one of the board packages, Eric Tyler was an employee. But he seems to show up over and over again as a vendor. So is he a boy or is he paid by vendor or what?
You have to be in the Tyler system. You have to be a vendor if you're not a customer. So your customer account, if you're an employee and you're being reimbursed through your contract or through your union contract, um, or even for training purposes or anything like that, they pay out of pocket and then get reimbursed by us. They're entered as a vendor so that it doesn't show up on their water bills because it's completely different, it's completely separate. So we entered those people, whether they're employees or not, they're all considered vendors if they're being reimbursed. There's no other employee portal in Tyler.
So that fifteen hundred is some training that he went to?
I believe so, yes.
It was.
Certification.
It's a certification. Yeah, well, it was a, uh, backflow preventer. Backflow prevention certification. Certification. Certified.
Any more from the public? Zoom? Full cash?
No, uh, we, that's all.
Is that?
We do, we do.
That was one, that was good. Yeah, okay. Um, informational items, board reports. Hmm. Saunders.
No, board report, because the holiday season was, uh, pretty not a lot of action that I do have legislative reports, so. Once the board's done, I think board reports don't have my legislative. Okay, I can say something.
Uh, the county, Eldorado County Water Agency meeting was canceled last month. I got another one tomorrow.
I don't have anything.
There's two.
And I guess the only thing to report is we have the Regional Water Association. It's Thursday, so Nicholas and I will be gone. And that's all. Nicholas and I will be gone. And that's all said, uh, headwater meeting is, I think in two weeks.
Twenty seventh. Yep, twenty seventh. It's Friday.
Like to ask. Legislative liaison report?
That's me. So, uh, the legislative session opened up on January fourth. They've started putting in some bills. The legislative, uh, session opened up January fourth. So, uh, the new assembly and, uh, state senators have started meeting and putting in bills. Uh, during the last week in December, I met with our new state representative, Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. And the chief of staff for Assemblyman Joe Patterson. Both of the representatives are interested in, uh, visiting the water district. So I'll set up for them to come with staff so there can be a tour of GPO. Um, there are no, uh, bills that we currently have action items on. Uh, upcoming events, as we said, the RWA Executive Committee. On December twenty first authorized to sponsor legislation. That's going to improve groundwater storage and that was added to the, uh, board packet, the letter that they sent with the coalition. And, uh, the two bills to watch from, uh, that RWA is supporting is ACA two. That's, uh, requires three percent of the state general fund to be appropriated to address wildfire and water supply. And AB sixty two would establish a statewide bill to achieve four million acre feet or above, of above and below groundwater storage. And, uh, that's going to be for the water supply strategy. And that's one of the things RWA is working on is, uh. Groundwater storages and wells and above water storage. And. We'll try to get that worked in with what we want to do in terms of having extra storage capacity and, uh, stormwater capacity.
And I'll just make note that the Aqua State Legislative Committee is meeting January twentieth and I will be in attendance at that meeting.
Thank you, Director Saunders. General managers report.
Thank you. I just like to quickly go over the report that's in the packet. I also have a couple of other things that. Uh, were questions that got asked and I'd like to, to give those at the end. So, uh. Week of eleven, the eleventh, December eleventh, we met with our, uh, our grant writers. We took a tour of the facility here. We looked around at potential, uh, drought grant opportunities, fire grant opportunities. Uh, it was a good, uh, good meeting. He, uh, our grant writer, his, his name is Greg Young. He also had one of his employees, Robert Heather, in attendance. Uh, they got a good understanding of, of our district, of our infrastructure, our needs. Kind of, uh, you know, things that we are looking to do moving forward. Also, kind of mentioned this last time, but wanted to give an update. We did meet with Tara Verde regarding complete electrification. This is. Something that is, uh, moving forward as a state law. Moving forward, anytime we replace vehicles, uh, fifty percent of them have to be electric vehicles. That is a challenge that we're going to have to determine how we need. There are some. Workarounds, I would say that they, it was a good word to use, but we're trying to obviously make sure we don't, you know, skirt the law, but are doing it. Uh, for district justice. Uh, we did meet with, uh, some phone providers. Uh, we think we can save a considerable amount of money moving forward. Uh, by changing our phone provider. Met with some staff from the Forest Resource Collaborative in regard to a grant for the Cal Fire. Wildlife Mitigation Program that they have. Uh, this is, we're hoping to have an opportunity to purchase some new equipment with this. Um, a larger excavator. And, uh, massaciating head for up in the canal areas in the upper country that can also be used in the lower country. This will help. To, uh, uh, clear out those irrigation canals, making sure that we are, are fire safe, um, and then continuing to. Uh, work with the upper areas where we have, um. You know, kind of dead, dying, uh, hazard trees. We also are looking to purchase a skid steer with that money, which would also include a mulching head that we can use to mow some of the roads in the lower country. As well as use for, uh, general utility. Uh, one other thing that we would, are applying for in that is a drone. And this drone could be used, uh, to inspect canals that are, uh, a little bit less, uh, accessible. Unfortunately, in this time, right now, we are having a real hard time accessing some of our canals because of the road conditions up there. So a drone could potentially alleviate some of those concerns. It wouldn't alleviate all of them, but some of it. Uh, with the holiday season, I mean, we were doing a lot of kind of catch up. I started working on assessing and, uh, understanding our budget and worked on. Trying to figure out how our budget's going to look different in the same way in the next year. Um, as was stated, the legislative session opened. We have discussed. Some things that will be talked about later in the meeting with the Celtic Community Association. We discussed the Heavenly Trails Community, WBR study. Uh, I attended a climate vulnerability, climate vulnerability assessment workshop for Eldorado County. A couple of good news updates. The district received some of the payments from the surplus equipment that was sold. Um, the truck payment, uh, was deposited and the backhoe was picked up, I believe, Monday. Yesterday or the last week. It was earlier or very last week.
Yeah, Friday.
Again, yes, Friday, because you were here. I was. So that, that, we'll see that money being deposited into the equipment fund. We did utilize some of the funding to purchase some, uh, new hand tools. And a toolbox for the shop. And again, those tools will be, uh, designated for the shop. Uh, really good news is, uh, Stumpy Meadows Reservoir, uh, reached, reached full capacity on September, uh, January first. Uh, started spilling. So obviously that's good news moving forward. We have a full reservoir. And. As according to my general manager report, it appears, but I will include this in the rec, in the record. I did receive an email. From Western Hydrologics that we are, our transfer obligation has been fulfilled. So I will just kind of show this to the board. But as you can notice right here, zero. This is us being full. This is the, uh, I'm sorry, delta condition right here. This is the delta condition in excess. And this is the American River releasing flood, floodwater is yes. So I will, um, make this is included. But, uh, we have paid off our, uh. Transfer. Obligation.
Including the refill.
That's the refill out there.
There you go.
Um, so moving forward, obviously, we're going to keep working on the fire response. There it is. Uh, we'll be kicking off a salary survey on January eighteenth. Again, I'll be attending the state legislative committee on January twentieth. Uh, office manager Jessica Buckle and I will be attending the Rotary Club meeting on the twenty fifth and giving a presentation of the district. Setting the headwaters meeting on the twenty seventh. Uh, Aqua Federal Advisory Committee on the thirty first and, uh, Mountain Counties will be February third. And then, uh. Uh, hope everybody had a great new year. And I do have one other thing that I want to address that, uh, Director Seaman brought up. It was in regard to the AMR meters and the notifications that were now. So we actually got a five percent credit. For that, uh, it amounts to about thirty four hundred, excuse me, ninety four hundred dollars in credit back to the district for not notifying. Or as setting up flyers.
Yes, these three items that were, they told us they were going to do.
Correct. And we, we negotiated a five percent reduction in the, in the project management fee. Project management, management fee was. Hundred eighty seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and the total deduction worked out to be nine thousand, three hundred, ninety dollars and thirty cents. So. We should see a reduction. Uh, I'm not sure if it's coming back or if it's still retention or not, but we at least are not paying ten thousand dollars.
Hey.
Good job.
So that's just case three today. That is the extent of my, uh, general manager report. I'd be happy to take any questions from the board or the phone. Director Saunders.
Nicholas, does the, uh, grant include, uh. Training and a certification for the drone? Cause I know that also comes with a certification and, uh, training.
I believe that would be, uh, we would have to, we could include that in the grant writing, um, but that may not be included. They may not, they may not.
Not cover it, yeah.
Because that's an FAA certification they may not want to do. But, uh, we could definitely include that.
I'm pleased to hear something more concrete than appears like so.
I, I wanted to, I wanted to put something in there because I had been working on it. And, uh, we had, uh, we were waiting. And when I wrote that, we were waiting for the state to update their website. And so I had spoken to our consultant and he said, you know. The best I can say is yes, but, but, and so, um, I just found out to, it was yesterday or today. Um, we confirmed that it was a definitely yes. And we, we actually have confirmation from DWR. We're, we're waiting on confirmation from the bureau. They're a little slow on stuff like that.
Was that an oversight by the, um. The folks that were. Doing the management of the project to notify the. People in the district that they were getting their meters replaced.
Was it an oversight by who?
Did they, did they intend to do it?
They were supposed to.
Okay.
And I don't know, uh, if they, it got away from them. Their, your guess is as good as mine. Fortunately, they didn't do it. And it was, it was noted. I don't think anybody I've talked to. Staff or board or any, you know, customers actually received a notification. So. You know, could they have done it and it got lost in the mail? I mean, I guess, yes, but that would be a, a lot of busts in the mail. Or, or likely as they, they over, it was an oversight.
Yeah, could you?
Yes.
Before we get it finished?
Oh, I didn't, yeah.
Yes, because I mean, if you look at, there was three items and this was the, you made me go dig through the package.
Sure.
And I found what they were supposed to.
They acknowledged. They, they, they said that they made a mistake and they, they should have done it. And so that's why we, we negotiated, you know, a five percent, I think is, was fair. That's, that's. We were going to start with four to five percent. We did five, four to five thousand and we said five percent. That worked out to be a little bit more money. So I think we. We've got a pretty good deal out of that.
And the other thing is on the, um, water transfer, was that something you were have, you had to go reach out to? Westland Water or did they contact you? You know, cause I, I notified you.
I was, you and, you and, uh, Director McDowell had both, uh, asked a question. So I had been kind of looking and watching.
Right.
And I went to the websites to look about. The delta being in excess. Unfortunately, I didn't have, it wasn't updated. So I reached out to Jeff Meyer, who's our consultant, and he has a, he was able to contact them. They just hadn't updated their website. So he reached out to DWR. To, uh, determine if the delta was in excess and he was able to confirm that, yes, it was.
So we are officially done with that contract or is this only for the year?
Oh, no, no, that will, once we get, we're just waiting on the final confirmation from the bureau and then we done with that.
Completed.
Complete.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Like I said, I have, uh, an email. I did include it because it's DWR that, that states that they are accepting of our transfer obligation we paid.
Thank you.
Cherie.
I thought one of the requirements was that the Folsom Lake had to be in excess.
It has to be releasing for floodwaters, which it has been doing. It has been doing since the twenty seventh of December.
So now we're not going to have any more charges after, for Western Hydrologics on this?
No, Western Hydrologics works with us on other projects as well.
Okay, yeah, but for this, they're good.
There'll, there'll be one more based on finishing up, up January.
Yeah, so January, it's actually not technically, uh, it'll be official, official at the end of January.
You said that the Stumpy spilled on the first, but actually it hit twenty thousand acre feet on the thirty first. Are you counting the twenty one to sixty? The new depth or?
I was just using it as that's the new year's.
Oh, well, it was on the third, thirty first. But are we, but are we using twenty thousand? I know in the urban.
Twenty one, it's the twenty one to sixty.
Right.
Two oh six.
So that's, so when it said it, it went over, was that that basis, right? Okay, so that, so then with the urban management report, you're going to, you're.
It's already done.
We're, we're updating it.
Well, yes, right.
Part of our agenda today, we're updating that, but it's not going to be official until you go.
Right, but then we're going to go to that new.
Correct. If you can, you can start to think that it's the new number now, but as of reporting, we can't update it until it's officially in the record.
It has to get approved by them.
By the state.
Bonnie.
And then on the, um, the grants. Are we going to, um, for these equipment and the grounds, what percentage are you think that we're having to cover for that?
We're not sure yet.
It was generally.
Generally, there's seventy five percent covered and twenty five percent just. And we're asking for approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that won't be something we won't know. We're going to budget for it. But it'll be a CIP type budget. So we won't know until next fiscal year.
Yes, who are you getting?
That would be through, that one is through Cal Fire. The other grants are through Cal OES. That would be fire mitigation.
How much did you say? Six hundred and what?
It's, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Probably, that's just approximate. You may, you may not get all that.
Be a hundred and sixty two five. Miss Neely.
Ooh. Comment about the smart water. I don't think it was just that they were forgetful or anything else. I mean, for example, in my particular street. My meter is close to my driveway, so they could easily find me and go to notice if they wanted to. Meter next to me. Goes to property that's past my property. And you would have to go. You would have to take three streets and go in a box, find people. You know, I don't see how they could, when they made that promise to you. I don't think they could possibly have found some of the houses.
Well, I think they were supposed to mail them out. So unfortunately, they, it was an oversight and it's incorrect.
Right. What was it? Postcard and the payer thing?
If you want to know it. Postcard mail.
Right.
Door posting.
Couple days ahead.
And door posting again.
I think the, 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 the key takeaway is that they acknowledged that they made wrong and they, they did what they can. To make it right and justify it. And, and we have reimbursement. I think that's more than we could ask for. Cause there are some companies that would just say. We forgot and will. So we got some reimbursement. I think that's a good thing.
We'll take the money and run and move on.
I think.
Operations managers report, if anything, you know. Operations managers report?
Yep. Thank you. Um, yeah, so we'll, we have Stumpy, obviously, you know, it filled up toward the end of the year there. Um, so our full capacity now. And currently spilling, I mean, spilling for, for some time if other, other ones was looking. Uh, for production numbers, uh. Down a little bit, um, from average, but average for this time of year. Um, no, no major issues. We have seen increased turbidity, uh, from these storms, but they've been handling the, the drainage process. Okay, so we. We've been closely monitoring that. Um, one thing we've been doing more, we have to. Some of our operations are taking longer with that increased sediment, you know, backwash operations. So we're having. Usually we do it a couple of times a week. We're up to, you know, sometimes we're doing it three or four, five, five times a week right now, just to keep up the higher turbidity levels. So. That's that. Um, our gross water for the year or for the month was, um, down to one oh five. I did make a small error on that. It should be one oh two. So we're, uh. Same thing on average for this time of year. On quick summary of that, some fieldwork, you know, the, the breaks, some meter installations. Um, after our callouts. Um, USA's are, I, we had a problem with the software, so I wasn't able to get the total number. So I just, I left it blank, but we should have that repaired, um, the next, next, but next month's board report. Um, outside normal operations, um. This helping finish up the meter reading, um, we had, we'll see in the further on, we had most of AMRs is in there. There's a handful that weren't, but just, it's, it's just still, we're going through that process of learning, you know, getting, downloading the reads, putting the reads in, reading them, just trying to get our routes developed for, you know, drive around and do it. So. Uh, but we got through it pretty, pretty smoothly. Um, the USA support was in town up here mainly for some of the work they were doing. Some of the outside work, um, canal maintenance, clearing out Greenwood Lake, get some more clearing, um, on the Taylor Mine Ditch. And just storm response. Um, every time there's a storm, we, we have to go around, make sure our waste gates are open, make sure we have. Places for all the water to go because our ditches become inundated pretty quickly with this, these kind of rain events. So. Trying to manage that best we can, trying to limit, you know, blockages, um, keeping extra couple of guys on call just to make sure we're not, you know, having, having blowouts throughout the district. So it's just. It's a lot of going around checking as, as these rain events come through. A lot of extra, extra time. Uh, so moving on to some, just some pictures of what um we saw kind of towards the end of December. Um, so you just show some different impacts. Um, when snow was there, there's some small slides, different areas um. Into the canal, um bottom right shows the one of our structures, how this is structure two in a really high burned area. So you can see the amount of silt um that's coming into that, that structure. That should be about six feet deep right there. There's a whole kind of catchment area and there's a valve about four or five feet down below that. So that's the kind of challenges we're seeing, we're documenting all these as, as we go up and see them and just recording it and. Trying to mitigate as best we can. It's really, it's access is really difficult up there right now. It's because we're in between snow. In rain, snow is easier, it's easier on our uh the snow track to get up and then you get in mud, it's very difficult. We can't, you can't drive up there. It's still in the snow track, but it's not. Made for mud, it's made for snow. So.
I just have to, why did they not put fabric or something up on that thing? So the silk wouldn't go down.
I mean, the catchment's like two hundred acre. So, yeah, you're not. Yeah, um, no, it's, yeah, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole, no, like Pilot Creek watershed is a large drainage going to that one spot. So that's, I think that's the long term approach um to get some kind of erosion through different grants opportunities. But. There wasn't a lot of we could do for this, for this winter, based on the timeframe we had. Um, so the second showed a couple, the top two picture shows our recent work at. Um, ventures into the tunnel through our N R C S funding. And it did work. We did have um some debris flows over top of what we just did. So it shows that what we did worked. Um, it's, it's very quality, but you can see some of the silt on there. Um, you see some of the flows just bottom right, bottom left coming into the ditch. Um, we did have a slide area near structure five. Luckily, it's in a pipe section. Um, so we know it's there. Um, we. Placed it, we put um some erosion control methods to limit any more erosion from that. Um, once we get better weather, we know we get our district engineer up there, we'll assess it and see how we can further mitigate that. But. Right now, the bros not passable in that area. You know, we have it blocked off. Um, and some mitigation method down there, limit, limit increased erosion. Uh, moving on to some couple pictures, we had a tree, some tree line breaks. This one was uh middle of the night. Um, near Northside School, which is the day before the last day of school. So the crews are out there till I think three in the morning. Making sure that, you know, the school stayed on for the next day. So they they put in a lot of effort that day. Um, it's cold and rainy, so. Lot of hard work went into that, making sure, you know, that stayed on. Couple additional pictures on the bottom there to show some of the vegetation. Uh, moving on to C I P uh program. Um, paving project, we're same, same spot there. He knows it's not paving season, so it's kind of written that one out. Um, the asset management work order software, the Cartagras software, um pretty much next week, we're gonna start using it full time. Um, we've gone through the testing phase last month and a half, which was kind of a challenge during the holidays, you know. Just in these rain events, it's, it was a challenge, but we're. We're getting there. A lot, a lot of the crews being very comfortable, comfortable with it. Still have Jessica on the office staff to get. Um, totally on board here. Um, so my plan is kind of next couple board meetings to kind of show what. What you guys vote on, what you, what we're paying for, kind of have a demo of it, um to show what and show what we'll get out of it. Because I know it's kind of, it's kind of in the background because, you know, we use it as staff here, but. We'll pull the numbers and what, you know, work we do out of that system to show, show you guys and develop, but it's definitely good to. Give a quick, quick show of what what it is all about. You know, more, more comfortable with it. Um, so chimney flat water main replacement requiring supplies for that, um water conditions assessment. You can flee the pump stays, station evaluation. Um, so the quick findings from that, you know, is one of our stations doesn't have redundant pumps. Um, some remote communications to those pump stations, which we kind of knew this, but it's, it's really put the data on paper and showing, you know. Where we need to, we need to put our C I P funds and backup power source to some of them. Um, so I made a meter project. Um, the contract is finished installing all the meters were, were about, you see about a hundred short. Um, that's just because as you go through, there's just different issues come up that one was found that wasn't there before. So we're basically finishing that up. We're going to get the remaining ones installed. We have about probably thirty here. We saw, sometimes there was problems with installation, so they would issue it to us. So our staff finishes up those installations. So we're probably about fifty or so short and we'll get those ordered, get those complete in the next couple of months. Recycling, we're just waiting on those, the second contractor come and pick those up. Um, we have them all down the treatment plant in. Sweetwater, so once that comes through, you know, she has no. So the only thing the contract's really left doing is a G I S completion. So they're going through. G I S and all the meters, so it's in our system and we don't, since we're not gonna be reading them every month, we don't, every two months, we don't lose them, always be there. Um, A M I meter infrastructure is still in progress, safety walkways, but that's on hold. Um, pump state generator retrofit, I mean, the condition assessment really brought that even more to light. So that's something I'll be working with our district engineer to get. On track because we do have some money in there for our. Um, in our C I P to do some of that work before, before that fiscal year. Um, and then the last item, we'll, we'll talk about that more um in the packet. The monthly demand water assessment. So um continues overall, we did see, you know, about ten percent reduction in gross water use residential since um June. Through December. Um, so I think it's something we're gonna, we'll talk about more in the urban water manager update, but. Something we're gonna have to keep working on as a district is um money, water savings to, to meet the goals of the state and. Keep us eligible for state, state kind of funding, so.
Does word of any clarification questions or comments? Director Simmons.
Um. Oh, on the break, um I've noticed like when I've been around uh where we've had a break and some of the other areas. Um, I guess nobody realizes it's gonna be muddy water hitting their system. Is there any kind of way we can have a notification to the public that we've had a water break in your area? Uh, you may. Uh, you may find that you're, you get water uh that is cloudy. Uh, you need to run your water for until the cloudiness. Goes away, uh because I know I, I've had it hit. I was like, oh, it must have had something happen here. Well, in my case, it was, they were putting the meter in. Um, but like this last one here, I saw a lot of Facebook hits that, oh, we had all this many water. What's going on? Because not everybody knows. That there's a break in the area and all of a sudden now you're maybe pouring your water for your coffee and it's cloudy. So. It would be, I think, good customer service to reach out to our customers and let them know that they may have an issue.
Yeah, yeah, so I've thought about that. I would, I would, what I wanna do when we do a water smart notification, I wanna have like a link on there and have a page on our website is. Haven't developed that yet where, you know, if there is a break, this is kind of what to.
Well, they need to know, they have a break, because a lot of people don't know.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that, that's.
So I mean, if you get the call, like we get that automatic call and there's something that goes down. Then it's like, if you, I don't know if you can segregate your calls to, there's been a break at this area. Your area may be, your water, your, your water source may be affected. Uh, it's cloudy. Would you please, you know, if it is cloudy, please run it. A little bit, uh get the cloudiness out and your, your water should be fine after that.
That's good, yeah, we can do that.
Um.
We try to give.
Water smart.
So we try to give updates as much, as much as we can, but like, like you said before, if their contact information is not good, they're not gonna get notifications. So we, we. We set out, we can draw on the map where the break is, what customers are thinking, we're thinking back to what roads, so. But we could, we could definitely have more details in those messages.
Get that and then like your Facebook page, you know, that you have that up. So like, okay, we've had a break in this area or something. I'm just.
Yeah, I think we could definitely do that.
Just to get a little more customer service.
And I will give a shout out to Jessica because she did message on the, on the post and her, on her personal time to. Basically do what she said, flush the system, contact us if they had any more issues. But, yeah, I was, she was, she was really good about it.
Yeah, I was gonna say something like.
But we could, we could probably also make an announcement in those groups as. G D P U D.
When you're not on.
What? Probably not allowed to be on those pages.
There you are.
Not as, not as, not as a business usually.
No, they do. That's why I was wondering why you guys on there, sharing, but it needs to also be posted on your Facebook.
The, the problem is that we have very low percentage. Of people signed up with their contact information. So we can't directly, this is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong. Because we've gone over this many, many times over the years. People aren't signing up for notification. So. We can't notify them because you, you're saying, and I agree with you, that when the event occurs, we need to reach out and notify the customers. But if all the customers don't give the contact information, then that can't happen. And so if we put it on Facebook.
Would be good.
If we, right, if we put it on Facebook, then the customer would have to be going on Facebook to look and see if she can find here for he. Could find something about what's going on. So. You know, as far as contacting, that's been an issue for years. We tried to get everybody to do it.
Ourself every time and move forward. We're not living in the past.
Right.
Okay.
But I think we could make the announcement and if people might, might be the, hey, did you get the announcement? I wanna get the announcement. What are you talking about? And it might get more people signed up. So. Who knows? We could definitely uh. At a, you know, the circle and probably just not a main message, but you know, there's potential for what, you know. Dirty water, cause we want to.
I'm wondering if we couldn't uh talk to the county. And maybe get on their notification system because they have it broken up into areas.
That would be more difficult.
Oh, okay, alright.
It's pretty, like where you see valves and stuff like what gets valve off and it's. Water smarts works well. It's just, you know. Sometimes it's ten at night, sometimes it's, you know, five in the morning and we get them on as quick as we can. Um, but yeah.
Alright, understand. They will give Adam a, a shout out because that was a Saturday night, Friday night, Saturday night. And they were on, the guys were on it. They were. And three or four, two or three guys out there on it. So it was middle of the night and.
I got a call from a congressman, so.
Is that one on Saturday?
Yeah, the north side one, yeah, so I sent it to you. Well. I got one too. Seemed to me it was a weeknight because I went over there.
That was, the north side was a weeknight.
Yeah, okay. And uh hate to be a bearer of bad news. So I'll give you some good news. Um, Brian, uh, the, the superintendent of the maintenance department at the school uh had some uh. Good positive uh things to say about Brian. It's not the first time, but uh just wanted to relay that to you. Left a voicemail with you last week. I wanted to.
Me?
Yeah. But it's all right. I'm saying it in public now. So Brian, get some good reviews. I was there a couple of times to follow up and. Somehow they shut it off before I was able to get there and I, I couldn't, I didn't see any work in progress, but they were there in and out. Taking care of the flood that was going into the church. It was downhill. So that's where I got, and I said, just, you know, just because you know me, doesn't mean. You need, I needed a grease to skids, just call their after hours number. And by the time I got there, uh Brian was already there and took care of business. And uh so I just wanted to say that. So.
Doesn't matter who you are, you all get the same recognition.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have to, do you have the name drop one of the board members?
Yeah.
We'll stick them out in place.
Yeah, yeah, I had a question here. Uh, what, what did this photo here represent? These Bigfoot photo? What, what is that? What's, should that be uh void of uh?
It's, it's, yeah, it's a shovel. So you look at the shovel, the depth of the silt inside.
Oh, I see this. Okay, I see that.
Yeah, I was trying to show there just.
Oh, I did, I do see it now. Thank you. Yeah. Um. Oh, I thought you took your shot. Okay, go ahead.
I was just asking about, um.
Yeah.
With the uh automated meter project report, we could keep reporting the um state uh loan payments that we have. We can keep that on there too, so I know what.
We haven't started paying.
Yeah, but what, what's been refunded and all of that stuff, we have that on there.
We can have a final, maybe next month.
Yeah, it should be. And then on the monthly water demand assessment, there's December one twenty two, that's the first for the. One oh two. Well, that was one oh five?
Yeah, one oh two, yes, it's one oh two.
So percent change, it says it's up twenty eight. So was that a?
That's a residential side.
Right, so that's, that's one of the areas that, see, we're going back up again, so we're gonna have to keep working on our. Even though it's raining, the conservation stuff and. We're still way above probably ten fifteen G P C D above what twenty twenty, the X B seven target, so. We're gonna have to keep pushing that. Do we have any updates on the overall um? The D W R?
Uh, the L A news?
The um, well, the surveys, the snow pack surveys, I mean, I saw.
Oh.
Did you get a copy of those yet?
I, yeah, I did. They're, they're online. I did not.
Okay.
Yeah. With all this rain and that it gives, you know, and stuff being full.
It was, it was like fifty, fifty seven percent above average, but.
And usually January or February first is when you start to assess those because January first is still a little bit too early.
Yeah.
Director Simmons.
Um, when, when you're, when you're looking at the residential water use, is. Does that, uh, do you take away whatever is being discharged and if it flow break?
It, it takes away, um, no, it takes away commercial use, um industrial use, irrigation use.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if they have the break, you know, we're, we've dumped three hundred thousand gallons out.
No.
Does that show, or is this coming out of the water treatment plants?
That's, that's comparing your water treatment plant's production rate to your residential usage rate.
Um. Uh, oh, and then the recycling of the meters, are we getting anything back for the recycling?
Yes, yeah, so we, we entered a contract, I think in June or July, when we first started the project, it's, they guarantee us a price per pound. But once they get them, they take the plastic off and then they, they weigh the brass at that point. So and they're, they're, they should be picked up in the next couple of weeks.
Alright.
Just getting, trying to schedule it to them.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Dow.
Yeah, um, I was wondering, after sixty years, we used to have twenty thousand acre feet and stuff, and now we got twenty one thousand. How did we gain that extra value?
You, you didn't really, it was just a more, better calculation.
We've always had twenty one.
Two oh six.
Twenty one two.
Because of the fire probably filled up the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. Uh, the paint fire, we were all pregnant and filling up the sill.
So some did, but yeah, that's, it's a, a better way of doing survey, better, better methodology.
Uh, another thing too, uh, I've been measuring the water around here for years and uh. One year, a couple of years ago, we got twenty nine uh inches of rain for the whole season. And December, I measured twenty seven inches the whole month of December. And it's like unbelievable. And then the, the rest of the year, July to December, uh thirty four total. And now we've got like seven, I don't know, it could be eight inches that we have to go home and measure again, but this is unbelievable, you know? So we'll be able to use more water this year, won't we?
Well, yeah.
We have a seventy five gallon state person per day.
Now, the state, the state will still not want you to do that.
Right.
Uh, and I'll just, I'll make a note of that, the state actually declared a lunatic year this year, so uh. You know, Mother Nature did not agree with the state.
Yeah, you watch your son, he'll be crying, it's a drought.
No, they, they, I guarantee you that they will continue on with the low waters.
Thank you, Mr. Dow, for, for that and that's what you get for electing the right board. Um, Cherie.
So the, I was under the impression the smart water, um you could segregate areas to send out messages?
For Water Smart?
Yeah.
Yes.
Water Smart, okay. And then at one point, you said there was two thousand, how many people that are? Is that where you had the other set of emails versus the um?
Oh, yeah, it's. Yes, um, I'd have to look. I don't know how many emails we have in there. I haven't looked recently.
But you can also put in a text and an email, right?
Text, email, and voice call.
Okay, so is the Jessica done? But are the staff, every time they talk to a customer, are they asking them to sign up?
We, yes, we're asking for updated contact information. Um, may not sign up each time, but.
Right.
And then if we, and if we update Tyler, every day Tyler uploads that new information to Water Smart.
Okay, that's good. So this is residential levy on copper sampling. That's not in the state's requirement?
State requirement, yes.
Yes. What are you doing to do that? You go into people's houses and?
Yes. You go to a certain point in people's houses and test their water.
How many are you doing?
The percentage.
How much? Twenty, twenty total?
Yeah, the state for our customer base is one.
And is there any reason why you're not putting down the number of lockups under report? And is there any reason why you're not putting down the number of lockups under report? You're just putting lockup?
Uh there was no reason. I, I can.
And then have you made a decision yet, um if you're gonna be driving around reading meters more than every two months? At what time are you gonna be able to do it once a month? Keep things. So the customers have a more updated, uh like I had an instance where I had a ugly faucet. I didn't turn it all the way on. So I had a slow continuous drip for like a month. Then we finally figured it out, cause I talked to Adam and figured out I just didn't turn it all the way off. It's a but I wouldn't have known that because it did not notify. Like that other guy that was here last month, I did not get notified. It's because I had a warranty bill.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm working on how to do that. Um uh Inco's unique with how it bills and how it puts out your consumption numbers. Members will work with um Neptune software and to, and Water Smart to make that happen. So we could go out every month and just do a read.
So after you read the meter, can I as a customer go in and see that whole two months worth of reading? Or is that only something?
No, yeah, you, um no, yes, you only see a snapshot. You don't see.
So they don't give us a daily?
That's full, that's full AMI. Those meters will do it, but we don't have full AMI.
It doesn't record the data in the meter. It only records it when you record the meter. What he's saying is as we get the AMI input, then it'll send us the data every day.
Well, I know that, but once you read it at two months, you have that in your system. Does that not go to the customer?
But it doesn't do that like a day, like you use X number of gallons per day.
So I can go in somewhere and find my previous two months? Daily?
You should be able to do it in Water Smart.
Yeah, it was, if you look at your, the chart, it shows a chart, your consumption.
Well, just a chart, but it doesn't give me what you sent me.
No, it won't do that unless we have AMI. Yeah. And yeah, we have to have AMI and that would, that talks like every five minutes.
Well, yeah, and I'm just saying, even at the end of the two months, I should be able to see that. In the past, it wouldn't be current. That doesn't show up. And then those recycling of the meters, um two or three years ago, I found the price and everything. We could have probably got forty thousand dollars uh recycled.
That's about, we're estimating about forty-five fifty.
Cause they ha- they weigh about eight pounds, the old uh brass ones.
Stealing.
You mentioned that you could switch to a new company to mail out bills. If I understood you correctly.
Correct.
Well, two days ago, I got a paid receipt. I do utility billing and that was fine. But I haven't gotten the bill yet. I was just curious if they, are they mailed out late or early in the month or it just seemed weird to know that they somebody already have the amount because they could subtract my payment, but I haven't seen the bill yet.
Um I'm not sure. I know they, it went out at the same time. We said it this, because we have that deadline before the first of the month to get it out. Yeah, and I, you know, honestly, sometimes we, when storms like this during um the post-off does have sometimes getting, getting mailed. We've seen that in the past during storms. You guys probably know that.
It, it should be changing. If it's not, unless.
Do they notify you when they actually mail one?
Yes, I believe so. They're supposed to give us an email to say that you're billing.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, this is about the fine.
It should be here with them. I would say it's seven days or less.
Water Resources Management Report.
So we had twenty-six routine inspections. Um Astros slowed down a lot. We had one. They had eight follow-up. See, we did a no spill for early December, so that covered November, but this month with all the rain, we have had two spill events at Station sixteen. Um one of which required sampling, the other one wasn't big enough to report. Uh we had our calculations were twenty-four inches of rainfall. And then um our WDR stuff, so we'd met with Bennett and the state uh late November and we were discussing those ADUs and then possibly splitting, if it was benefit splitting that permit into two, so you would have the non-CDS homes and then the CDS homes on separate areas. And if that is to happen, from my understanding, the county would need to be a little bit more involved or way more involved with the non-CDS homes. So we have a meeting, it's Thursday with the county, the state and Bennett. So we'll know a lot more.
We'll counter that. Okay. Thanks for following up on that.
And that's that for the waste discharge requirement for the, to eliminate it on people susceptible thing? Uh not really.
We changed the, the testing.
Yeah, it's just an update, so the so you would still be involved in the testing. Yeah, well.
Potentially. We're not sure what the requirement will look like. That's what we're studying is, is what is the different rates of uh impact that the non-CDS and the CDS systems will have on the, on the area, so.
So they won't be like us that are getting A R that have said what's that? Well, like I never have to have any minimum spec mine unless I sell my house.
It just has to do with the location and the infiltration rate at those locations. So that's what they're doing. They're testing infiltration rates. They're testing to see how much how close we have to pay attention to those subject.
Okay, so it's not, you're not going into eliminating cheap as part of inspection?
You don't know yet. That's what we're trying to, that's what, you're, you're right. They're trying to determine that. So there, there's a potential that we may not do all of them, but there's still a potential that we may do all of them. They're trying to determine.
So then those homeowners wouldn't be charged?
I mean, I can't answer that question until. I can't answer that question until the WDR is done. Theoretically, if we're not expecting them, then they shouldn't be paying. Well, that's very, that only, that income can only go to that system then. So that's not like we're losing general fund income. Yeah, but.
And you still have the same employee, the same.
But.
What's the acronym WDR?
Waste, Waste, Discharge Requirements.
And that's your list.
It's an alphabet soup in the water world.
With the waste water discharge from you. And then waste water discharge from you.
Correct. It's a WDR permit, I believe, right? That it's actual.
It isn't glossed over very well, I'm sure.
It's, it's a requirement. It's not, it's not a permit yet. It's the requirements. How much?
We like currently have a.
Correct.
So what we're doing is assessing whether or not there's adjustments that need to be made to.
That's one part of it.
Part of a NPDS permit.
And the, the other part is, the other part is the accessory dwelling units to determine uh the impact.
More to the soup. National Pollution Discharge. I'm working on it.
I could be flowing along and flowing along and then he threw an acronym in there. I just got in my tracks, you know, so like.
I, I know unfortunately I'm really bad about acronyms, cause I have been stopped more than was. Could you like go back ten acronyms and tell us what all that meant?
Changing. It used to be just we had an NPDS.
And it would be useful. There's a couple of spots in here where it doesn't, it uses the acronym, but, but I couldn't figure.
Yeah, over here somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that one is because it's a page out of, I'm probably sure somewhere in like the earlier parts.
Are you looking at the urban water?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably those, so all urban water management plans have a cheat sheet at the front of them. So, so unfortunately you have to be able to have the whole page.
We need the cheat sheet.
It's about five hundred pages and I didn't think you'd want a binder. That would be two binders. We were trying to eliminate uh a second or another.
Yeah, CD something, we're running across it. Okay, so uh.
You burned up a coffee machine during that.
Any uh, any comments or clarif- or clarifications from water resources? Community, public comment? All right, then we'll move on to committees and that would be Mr. Miller, Finance Committee Chairman.
Well, we were fortunate enough to bring in one member to the wire last month. And that was good. The, the new member, I think is gonna be appreciated and heard right. And so we could move forward, which does not take away your obligation to find the crew more. Because it would be nice to have, if somebody gets sick or somebody gets caught traffic or somebody gets something, we we lose one member and we all go home. So just be aware, we have three, we're looking for five. Okay. We did go in the meeting last time through the, the budget and actual report. Uh there were some questions that were satisfactoried answered and I would have to say that we feel like uh we're doing well. Everything was accepted and looks in shape. Budget actuals is actually in good shape for the year over what we anticipate, so that's good. Not in every category, but in more, more categories, the positive or the negative, so that's good. And then, as I said, I mean, reiterate, we're still looking for two additional members for the committee so that we can continue to operate and function. Uh as an aside, the, one of the questions was brought up about how do people know when there's dirty water, what's going on? Uh since we did mention that we're looking for a new phone process, hotline might be really handy for that. Put it on the bottom of the bill. Any questions you might have about your water, please call this number. And now we don't have to go out and get their name. They can just put it down somewhere in their notebook and if they notice that there's dirt, they can just call in. We've already reported the particular area that there was a break and this might be a result. And now we're not tying them up or making them give us a whole bunch of information that they maybe don't want. And they will be, in the end of date with every information you wanna send out because we've got their name and address. But they have an access that doesn't eat up a lot of our personnel. Just a thought.
Just call Adam.
Don't call Adam seven days. Mr. Miller, I will just address your uh finance committee, uh search committee. Um we are resending out our uh public ru- uh press release, excuse me, and I softened the language a little bit so people feel more uh welcome and wanting to be on the committee. You know, I don't think the goal of that committee is to have somebody who's a, a CFO, master of finance. I think we need somebody who can understand uh the numbers and can look at something and make a common sense decision. So we definitely soften the language to encourage more uh, uh people to apply. Thank you.
The irrigation committee didn't wanna do it?
Uh we haven't had the need to have them come over yet.
Oh, they were just gonna fill in.
Yeah, what we'll do is we're gonna use that if we can't build a quorum and we were able to have a quorum at the last meeting, so.
I got somebody in mind that when you, if you could forward me a copy of that.
Uh Carol, if you could forward a copy of that press release to uh Director McDonald, I think he'd like to look at it.
I'll hand deliver it.
I gave it to you. It's like your email.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Irrigation Committee.
Yes, that's me. I I didn't realize I was supposed to um address the board, uh but uh I think at our, I mean, I'm relying on my faulty memory. Um at our last meeting that we had, we decided since there's only five months of irrigation, should have a meeting just before irrigation season starts and just after it ends and then monthly in between and then we had, as I recall, one others in there somewhere. I know it wasn't January though.
We, we're meeting in February.
Okay, well, there we are. In any case, uh I was fortunate enough to have someone come up and remind me, cause I didn't remember having a meeting today. And I had nothing to report. So there we are. Um and so in summary, I'm reporting nothing.
There was no meeting and at the last meeting, which was November, we did go over the irrigation ordinance. We will be uh re-going over the irrigation ordinance in February. We've uh taken all the committee's comments. We have extrapolated those comments into the ordinance, so at the next meeting, we'll be looking at a red line copy of the ordinance to uh for exception, exception to be accepted by the committee and then that will be forwarded around to the board for final exception. Uh I'm sorry, be accepted finally, final acceptance. By the Board of Directors. Uh before that, it'll happen before the upcoming year.
This. Director Simmons.
And then we're also needing the uh, the number so we can make a recommendation of, we're thinking about changing the irrigation season.
Yes, I think that.
That's who we're supposed to have. We, we get the numbers and then the committee will then look at that.
Both of those things will be brought over the next meeting. So the numbers and the ordinance.
I have a question. Uh how many?
President, go ahead.
Last.
Oh, your last?
Yes.
Oh, good to know. Good, good to know. I've been, I've been working on that. I'm trying to help out my buddy here. Unless he makes me angry, then. Uh is there some, is there anything that needs to be forwarded to me? I'm the new liaison for it. So is there any information that's been, what's been going on that you can send to me?
I can send you the copy of the ordinance that we were going over with the red line copy, so you can see how it's gonna adjust.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I sent it out to you. Uh if I didn't, I will send it out to the board.
Right, that's what I've been doing.
Yes.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. Um how many is on, how many do we have on irrigation? Six average, okay.
Everybody wants to be on, on our, on our team.
Yeah, I guess.
People in the waiting.
Yeah, uh it is, is, and I was, did, did Mrs. Duarte, she, did she, she's on?
Yes, we have one more member that if there's a, the vacancy can go on, cause there's more people wanting to go on than there are.
And Mrs. Duarte, she's.
Yeah, we have one person who may be removed with the new uh policy that we developed in the last meeting. However, we have to wait until that timeframe runs.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Can we have that new per- the person that wants to get on there about going on the finance committee? Run it out there. We have a one on the hook.
They're interested in the committees they're on, so you can send it out to them, but.
And who is it?
Um I can't remember the name of the person that was, but it was.
We can, we can ask.
I would just.
She's a servant.
You got a live one.
Service minded, you know.
Can I say something else?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh I think we need to maybe emphasize that, you know, the meetings are open to the public and so anybody can come to it. You don't have to necessarily be on the committee to go to it.
You do notice them. Just, just notice as a Brown, uh a Brown Act committee, just like.
Right, right, exactly.
So I think we can uh do whatever we can to continue the notice and maybe even expand our, our, our net.
Question from the Brown Act perspective, can another board member go to that meeting?
No.
That was my impression.
Anytime you have three board members in one room, that's very, very good.
So I'm not part of anybody.
Not even Zoom.
Uh you can listen in on Zoom, but you can't discuss.
Mr. Dow.
And my question, we're moving the season up one month and extending it to October.
That's why we need the numbers uh for the committee, so the committee can look at those and make a recommendation to the board.
We will have those for a while before the.
Okay, moving on. Um Grant Writing Committee, Director Saunders.
Yep, we're gonna set up a meeting and we'll try to have our grant writers there, so we'll also try and set up a. Regular date now, because we were doing a lot of piecemeal stuff now, so now we'll try to have it, try and get one set day.
I would say my goal is, you know, bi-monthly. Not monthly, but bi-monthly.
When are you gonna have it?
It'll be bi-monthly, so I'll, I'll work with the general manager, who went to grant writer. And we'll usually meet if there is something going on, we may meet monthly if there's like that.
Granted, it's typically coming uh, in spring or the fall, so that's why we don't.
So you can do that by Zoom.
Correct, yeah, we do, and it's ad, and it's ad hoc as well, so.
That's not a Brown Act committee, so we can meet by Zoom. We will probably only meet by Zoom for this.
You're wasted, otherwise we'd be charged for them.
Theoretically, yes, they, yes, they would charge us higher.
Next, next item. Uh, Committee for Policy Manual.
We're still working on getting that together, but I am going to have a meeting this month, just so we can um. Work on the checklist and some of the stuff we have, so.
You were agreeing on the meeting or we are agreeing to have a meeting?
We.
Okay.
We.
We're, we're trying to get the checklist together, but we will definitely have a meeting. Yeah, do we have a good date yet?
We didn't have a date yet, but Gloria will figure out when she's able to attend.
We are?
We, we as in the committee, not just.
Yeah, it says right here.
That's why I keep saying, I keep hearing.
Well, there is one person who is having a, once she's available, once Gloria's available, then we can get a date, that's the. That's what we've been waiting on.
Audit Committee, Director Saunders, Director Thorn.
You can't have anybody else do typing or anything?
Uh, she's working on the policies itself, of course. That's one of the special projects she's working on.
Audit Committee, Director Thornborough, Director Saunders.
Haven't come back yet, so once that comes back.
Yeah, once we uh, receive the final audit, or I guess the preliminary final audit, then we'll be able to have that committee meeting. Uh, that could be accepted and brought to the board.
Labor negotiation. Right. Director Saunders and Director Thornborough, is it, yeah, that would be you guys. Does that change to me and?
That should be on McDonald and Thornborough.
Yeah.
Some of them changed.
So.
Okay, go ahead.
When, when do we? Like, Director Saunders is on four committees and we have a director that's on no committees.
This is, th- this needs to be updated, the list isn't.
So are we uh?
He's a, he's a, he's a, he's done for the finance.
Yeah, we have to.
Right, but that's that, but then there's also.
I'm not on all of the committees that I'm working on, so that's what, this, this needs to be updated.
You know, we knew that last meeting, we said it was gonna be a one.
We did, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed.
Okay.
Maybe that's why it was noted by the public that it's lopsided or something.
Yeah, we will, we'll, we'll update, make sure Director Stovall's name is on there.
Or maybe flip it to the audit or something, I'm just throwing a name out there because of.
We would have to be a, uh, if you'd like to make a change to any of the committee assignments, we'd have to bring that back as an action item. Because that was voted on at the previous board meeting, so we'd be more than happy to bring that back if the board would like to have. Uh, Director Stovall or any other changes to the committee.
But this hasn't been updated for the last meeting, has it?
We're, we're, that's where I would just, we're updating it now, that'll be recognized, but what's the comment is that Director Stovall's on one committee. He's on the Finance Committee.
Right.
But uh, none of the other committees, I think the comment was, should we get him more involved?
Correct.
I have an interest in being a part of the grant writing.
When, okay, there's. I think we do not, there's no. Whatever the other board members on.
Now, and I think that was, someone said they were interested in that last time, I think it was around it, so I think that should be reflected.
Barbara, can I ask you a question? If we're gonna add a committee liaison, can we just vote on that as, even if it's not on the agenda? It's not, it's an ad hoc committee, or do we have to have a formal policy? I don't know how that works, how, how we should do that?
Um, I think you can go on an ad hoc, you can go ahead and add a board member, I, I, if it was a person from the public. You know, applying, that would be different, but to add the board member, I don't think it's any problem.
Okay.
Yeah. You're just appointed, because the board president can do that on their own.
Say, I missed that.
Right.
Our president has the ability to just have them also.
Yeah.
I think we.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, part of two, right.
Just as long as you don't have, you know, more than two board members on the committee.
Do it. Yeah, we, we just, we've done it.
Done.
Okay. You can appoint, you can just make a motion, you wanted to say that, where you as the president will be adding.
I make a motion that we add Director Stovall to the grant writing ad hoc committee.
Hi.
Well, second it.
I don't think you have to vote.
Yeah.
Really vote on it if it's not the agenda.
Yeah, you don't really need to, it is, make a motion or vote on it, it's an appointment by the president that y'all agree to, so. Then he volunteered for the position, it, it's different when it's. It doesn't take a formal action.
So Saunders won't be on the last list, Saunders shouldn't be listed.
Okay.
It was gonna stand and overhead on our part.
Okay.
Alrighty then. See, here we are, action item number eight, review of urban water management plan.
Okay, so uh, this is more, this is a little bit of an informational item. But it's, I, I would say, uh, we'd like to start the review process for our urban water management plan, so we're still waiting. On some approvals from the state, and we are addressing some comments that the state has given us. And we're also adding in some language, so I'd like to turn it over to Adam to go over uh, the potential changes that we'd like to submit back to the state.
Thank you, um, yeah, so a little quick background, urban water management plan two thousand twenty, we completed in uh, July two thousand twenty-one. It was submitted to the state, um, so in, by a year later, we received comments, uh, May twenty, May. Into twenty-two uh, of that plan, um, and there was a, a couple. Things they commented on, one was our SB seven by seven twenty twenty target, um, that we, we did not meet. If you remember in the U W M P, we put, um, due to um, higher demand during COVID period. We called it extraordinary event. The law does not allow for that, so they basically rejected that argument, so we did not meet our. Two thousand twenty um, target, um, so we have to, so we're going, that's, part of this is to revise that. The second part was just, you know, minor table corrections, or was a couple of table errors, um, so we, they commented what those were, so we're gonna fix those. Uh, moving, moving down, so. Since we submitted that plan, you know, there's been a lot, there's been some change to this, right, so. Um, the first one is the stumpy metal storage capacity, which that sets our um. Our stage, state, or drought restriction, or stage levels, so we wanted to update that. And the two thousand twenty census has since came out, um, our old person per household calculation was two point four seven, which is. How many persons live in a house um, per connection within our district, so that adjusts our gross water use number. And also the board discussion of um, fire mitigation. And due to just the climatic conditions we're seeing, you know, on the divide. Um, in general, I guess, not just the divide, um, so, quick sections that we revise. In here in this packet in red to show what, what we changed, there's some more table edits that we did. Those we reflected in our, in our February, March implementations, we have the complete plan, this is just kind of introduction, this is what. We need to address to, to meet the requirements, um, so. Basically, with, when do, with doing this, we have to re-public notice this whole plan and redo that whole process, so we already started that. Um, this week, unless it's only get some letters out to the county to start that six day process, so. By the uh, March meeting, we can have, we can do the. I think basically we, once, any discussion from these comments today, we can make those comments, we can have a full draft by. On the February meeting, um, have that, have that available, so it's, you know, on our website, so we'll see that and get our notice in the paper. Um, follow those, you know, leave obligations, we have to, to update this plan.
Open up a comment period.
Yeah. And so the, the. Down, so if we don't do, you know, if we don't do this, if we don't come up with this plan setup, we will not qualify for any state funding. So that's why we, this is important, we need to revise it, we need to um, justify our gallons per day per capita. Why we, why we didn't mean it in two thousand twenty? We know why we didn't mean it, right, we, we said that in the whole plan COVID, um, but we have to come back and come up with a, or you know, what we're gonna do. And actually, this year, we actually did meet it, uh, which was, we, I did the numbers last week before this meeting, so our target was about. One sixty-seven, we actually came in at one, one fifty-nine for two thousand twenty-two, so. That'll be good to add in the plan and show that we're meeting, and that should be. We have to keep on that trajectory, though, because it's, it's gonna keep happening, where if we don't meet it, they're gonna. Say we need to keep coming up with plans, so we can keep getting, you know, state funding, like the automated metering on the S R funding, that was, we wouldn't have got that. If we didn't show, we met the gallons per day per capita goal, or we had a plan to meet it in the future.
And moving forward will be the new water target, but water budget target, is what they're calling it, it's. A different metric, so it's not gonna be the same twenty percent, it's, they're gonna give us a number that we have to obtain. Based on how much water, based on the uh.
What we did.
S C eleven fifty-seven, based on our outdoor water usage, there's a, there's about forty-five criteria that they're gonna base on. And then we also have variances that we can apply.
This isn't the, this isn't the fifty-five gallon.
Yes, that, what, what I, what I presented last uh, month, that's the new.
So we're one fifty-nine?
So that was the old one.
And that's uh, that's gross, so the fifty-five is only indoor.
Oh.
So this is, so this, this is outdoors, everything.
It's all, it's about, there's five different things, four different things that make it into us, the indoor, that's the fifty-five, outdoor residential, outdoor commercial, and one of us.
We don't know what our outdoor is, we're fighting for that now, right?
Yeah, and that's, so this isn't, this actually doesn't, it was supposed to hit this year, but I don't think it's gonna be finalized in twenty twenty-three. But we are, we are on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the, that acronym that we were wondering what it was, G P C D, is that general plan census data?
Gallons per capita daily.
Yeah, wow, that's another one.
That one I actually knew, there was another one.
Gallons per person per capita daily.
Gallons per, the P is per.
B M P.
C I P.
B M P, best managed.
He's sort of the C. G P C D. Okay, uh, Director Stone.
Um, a comment on page seven one, uh, under the water reliability of drought risk management. I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to add in that red sentence there, it says irrigation system may be shifted. To meet best uh, customer demand and climate conditions, would it be appropriate to add in there and fire risk mitigation?
We have that, we have that at another location.
Yeah.
And I, and I have a comment on that is, uh, that area relates directly to our ordinance, so we wanna make sure. The language that we put in our urban water management plan matches the language we do in our irrigation laws, so. That's uh, one of the things we have to do, so.
I would not recommend putting it there, that answers my question. Yeah, if you go to page eight eleven is where we.
It's addressed.
It's more of, so the, the, the thing with the fire, it's more of a discretionary type thing, like. You can't really tell the state that you're using water for fire, but you can um, say that we have the discretion. If the district feels it's in the district's best interest of its constituents, that we are gonna allow them to use it for fire, and. The real unfortunate part is the state could say, well, you put this in here, but we don't agree with you, and we're still gonna find you. But then you have justification because you wrote it down, and here's why, and are they really gonna find you for having a fire suppression? Situation, probably not, but that's why I would like to keep the words on.
Okay, because it is other places.
It's on page eight eleven, you can do it, thank you.
So. So we just need to improve this.
You don't need to do anything today, this is uh, informational, uh, we wanted to present the changes that we are going to present. And this would start the basis of the sixty, are we adopting a sixty period now?
Yeah, we already, basically what the sixty period starts once, um, before our public currency is worked backwards. So that March meeting, we already, we started that.
Probably we need a vote on this, right?
No.
Yeah, this was just a, a presentation of the changes we'd like to make.
Just bring it back at the speed, you know.
On eight eight, the numbers are usually here at nineteen thousand, sixteen thousand, that is a start number. The level of stumping, but we're starting at nineteen and not at twenty-one.
Those are, um, when you are in stage one, that is basically, they're saying every stage is a percentage. Up to stage five, which is fifty percent, and you're, you're, once you hit a certain level of your reservoir. You have to start implementing your, your water shortage contingency plan, so it would be basically going into the new year, if you were at nineteen thousand. Then you'd start with a ten percent, going into the new year, if you were at sixteen nine sixty-five, so we're going in full, so we don't have any restrictions.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's the going in at the beginning of the year.
It's, well. It's at, it's at your, it's defined as your April board meeting.
Correct.
Based on your, based on the April tenth board meeting, that's.
We're at twenty-one.
Yeah.
We're fine.
Yeah.
And then if we don't, so we're at sixteen or seventeen, say roughly.
Yeah.
Then we have to start implementing it in April.
April.
But not. Not uh, that we're at twenty-one, and when we drop down to sixteen, we have to start doing.
Well, there's a caveat there, so remember, water shortage is not, not one linear, so it's. We're monitoring this all the way throughout, so this is our water assessment annual, but there's also state requirements, so. Let's say like last time, we were not at ten percent, but the state mandated us to be at stage two, so that's the other thing too, so. We also have that.
Yeah, that's an aberration. Okay, no, I think the whole purpose of this was never to have the governor do it again, but fortunately, he took every opportunity to do it again. Theoretically, this is what it should look like, yes, going in, so the April tenth meeting, going into the new year, into the water year, do you have? Enough water to sustain, and then that's an annual assessment every year, so it's not, it, it renews every April tenth, every April.
Right, but if the rest of state, I guess what we're running into again is that if the state says, we don't have enough water, because I think it's been hot. And we're gonna, they're gonna try to come at us again, and that's why we have this line in here, basically, that says, we. We reserve the right, because we are still working under these alerts.
We reserve the right, but it doesn't necessarily.
Well, we could be, but reality, we're trying to do the right thing.
We're, that's what we're saying, because we're, we're gonna follow your directions, but there are these caveats that we may need to implement. But we're still gonna do, we're gonna do everything in our power to follow what you're saying.
And we have examples, so we did have the mosquito fire, and we can show, we know how to use it, so that's.
No, I get it.
And I, and I think. I think the publicity of, of the state coming down and, and. Uh, finding a wa- a water district, any water district based on their water usage during a fire season. Would be, the optics would be terrible for the state, and I'm not saying that they're gonna do that, but any water district, if they did that throughout the state, I think that'd be terrible, so. Uh, I, I would say, as a staff, we're gonna avoid that as much as possible, but it does give us a little bit of wiggle if we need it.
Yes.
And also Aqua still has that group, and we will keep making sure, the whole point of having the urban water management plan is to have local control of our water. And that's why we will try to.
That's worked really well for us.
Well, we, we did fight it, but we will continue to push that, this is the whole point of this, if you want us to meet these uh, statewide. Conservation levels without local control, it's gonna be hard.
I think, I, I, I think it was really hard, because last year was a, was a very dry year. You know, if they were to come back and do it this year, I think you'd get a lot of pushback with the rain we're getting right now.
Yeah.
And the flooding, I think you'd be like, not sure we're gonna agree with that, so, so hopefully. You know, this is, this is going to move back into uh, what this was originally. You know, this is, this is going to move back into, uh, what this was originally intended to do it. And with this conservation plan they have moving forward and we're, I, I would say I'm optimistic. Experiencing the process and moving forward that this will be the, the methodology moving forward. Will, what you see on the paper, not. You know, a, a, a statewide decree.
Wanna try to cover all the bases because. Once Colorado shuts off and the pressure for water is gonna push towards the north, we wanna have everything. Documented for.
Um, I have a couple of. Questions. Um. When we did the new survey. The Deadpool went up about fifty percent. The dead pool of storage, is that the amount of water that?
When we can't pull any more water out of the.
Is this, does that mean it's behind a, a b- a berm of? That can't go over the dam to utilize?
It's where, where the access pipe is that, that's where it stops. Where the water, there's a, there's a pipe on the bottom of the dam.
Yeah.
Where the water flows out of. And it's kinda like the straws will make it all the way to the bottom of the glass.
Yeah, so that, so when they did the survey, they found there's, that's where half of the extra. Capacity is in that Deadpool, turns out.
Uh, potentially, yes, but. I'll let. Adam, you wanna address that?
Not really. Yeah, I'm just thinking now, I'm. I'm gonna check that. You know, I did a, I did a percentage on that.
Yeah.
And I could look at the actual elevation height of the new capacity to make sure that's accurate. That's a good point because it, it, it couldn't have been, it may not be proportional to the old storage. I'll check that, make sure that's accurate.
And, uh, if you could change that nineteen thousand, three thirty five to three thirty six, that'll make all the numbers. Work out. Although it did say approximately, but.
Which one is it?
Yeah, that's your clue. Yeah, it's rounding there.
Yeah, nineteen, three, three, six. So we thought we gained twelve hundred acre feet, but half of it's in the Deadpool. Yeah, if we can.
If we had.
Get out of there.
If we had to, we could hack something. I would say if we're, if we're getting to Deadpool, we have bigger problem.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I had.
Are you taking in that twenty one thousand two sixty?
Close to. Two oh six.
Two oh six.
Sorry, it was by mistake earlier. That's why.
When you did, when the, um, the drought estimations where she says nineteen thousand. Are you readjusting that taller number?
Yes.
You're gonna do all the way down?
Yes, that, that number's right.
There's.
That needs a change.
And does that include the Deadpool?
Yeah, that's.
So you, you still include the Deadpool in the amount of water that's there. Like I said, if, if, if you had to, you could access the Deadpool and it would require.
It'd be a world of, excellent by then.
We would pull a pump and I'm sure we would get a pump into the bottom of the stuffy somehow if we get the water through the pipeline. But again, that's.
Yeah.
How low can it go where we are not gonna be able to get water through the treatment?
It's about eighteen hundred.
Eighteen.
Oh.
Eighteen seventy.
Well, that's kind of like.
That is.
That's the Deadpool. He's gonna. Check.
Yeah. It's increased. It's, it's, I, when I've looked at it.
Really low.
It's very low.
Yeah.
That's down to about eight percent.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, if we, in a severe drought, how far?
Yeah.
Cause I know the last time we only had maybe the next year and part of the year after we didn't get rain.
I think the lowest has ever been around five or six thousand eight fifteen. It's not these.
Oh, really?
But I think it's five.
Yeah, it's twenty five percent.
Six and seventy seven below.
Also, hey, that's been gone.
Maybe we have pictures somewhere.
Oh, I.
I was looking.
I went over.
But then if we're at eleven thousand starting in, remember that's pretty much gonna cut off irrigation. So that's gonna save us about three thousand acre feet. So.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, that would be the, the good. The takeaway is, you know, you get, you start to get to a certain point and irrigation water gets, it's the first to go unfortunately.
Yeah.
Because you have to do health and safety.
Okay, so, uh. So the sixty day clock.
So do we wanna make sure the law? We put out all the information, everybody's aware. When does the comment period start?
As we get a draft and we start it. So, yeah. Um, the comment period is thirty days. It's sixty days of the county for some reason, but I think it's thirty days for the public. So we'll have it before the next meeting.
And where will it be posted?
Put on the website again like we did last time.
Both of the libraries and those tiny buildings.
Can you send them out an email on water?
Yeah, it's a large file. Yeah.
A huge document.
It's not legal if you do it.
It does get noticed and it gives that with that link to the website.
Or at least for the non Facebook.
We did that.
What? What I may do is, uh, I'll have our board president reach out to Lori Corland so she could add it to her, uh, county newsletter. And that might be something we can do as well.
Talk it through them.
I'll send that.
I think the county, the county would consider as well.
Yeah.
Or it's posted at the county. Okay. My experience is opposed to that, like the local libraries and. Tiny buildings. Did you have a question? You had, you gave me the.
You gave me the eye. Just giving everybody the evil eye.
Um. You know, I keep going back to the, you know, when you keep saying, oh, we're gonna get rid of irrigation. Uh, I did.
Let me clarify.
Well, we finished.
Get rid of it.
Well, we're gonna cut it. We're gonna, the irrigation to be first to cut. So we had talked about this before. The fact that. Um. Quote, we can't reduce it by. So if I have two inches, we reduce it to one inch and we cut irrigation flows by half. They, everybody gets half. Actually, um, I know at P C W A, that's what they do. They, they go and they pull. The orifices that. And change it from whatever size to half. For their next season and they do that every year.
Yeah, I think this is only if you're going in with an extremely low amount.
Yeah, I said.
Well, I'm.
I said eleven thousand acre feet to be clear.
Well, wait, but I'm just saying, if we, instead of saying, okay, we're just gonna cut this and we're gonna cut the irrigation.
Said that. I said if we were at eleven thousand acre feet.
If we were going to, what we're doing the September vote.
But we're, we're not discussing irrigation reduction now. So.
Yes, moving on.
Yeah.
Okay, Mountain, Mountain County's Resources Association election. Letter and ballot.
Um, so this is the, uh, bit of a process. Uh, uh, we've got a notice. From Mountain County's Water Resources Association. They are holding a vote for new officers. Um, they have five new officers and five, you know, they, they want you to vote for five of them. Um, so. I guess at this point, I would just would like. To know if there's anybody that we do not wanna vote for, uh, that is on the list. We have Jim Holmes from Blaster County. Scott Ratterman from Calaveras County Water District, Don Lasser. From U V O Water Agency, Susan or Sue Hoick. From Nevada County Water A- uh, Agency. And Susan Peters from Amador Water Agency. Uh, we can vote for one, we can vote for all, we can vote for a, a, a number of them, or we cannot vote at all. It is a, uh, stripped up to the board how we would like to handle this. I wanted to make sure, uh, I brought it to the board in case they wanted to, uh, weigh in on this election. It, it says in the discussion on the second paragraph of the cover page. Says G D P U D must vote for five.
Five, yeah.
Uh, I would say must is. Not the right word.
Right, that, right.
Uh, just checking.
Yeah, I know. Up to five.
Chalice.
I think you will, uh. Okay. Put down a way I credit.
Well, it, it does say if fewer are greater than five will invalidate the ballot. So.
I guess it's either vote for five or vote for none.
Yeah. Basically.
Oh, yes. I will apologize. It does say you must vote.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess either we're voting or we're not voting.
Right.
Either we vote.
And there's, it said something here about email to.
Yes, we, we could email it. It's, it's just an internal process.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's a, it takes a board. I can't vote for these folks, uh, without direction from the board.
Basically, it looks like they had, um. Their voting committee took all of the nominations that were sent in. Voted on them and these are the ones that the nominated committee. Came up with. So the greater pool, we don't have the option to vote on the greater pool, unfortunately.
Um.
Is it only five?
It's five, yes.
I was gonna say just vote for the vote.
No, they're, we're all.
So what's your, what's your pleasure?
But I moved that we vote for all five.
Miss, Director Seaman?
This, uh, yes or no?
Well, wanna hear input.
Um. I don't know any of these folks, but I'm, I, I'm curious that. Yeah, but. Yeah, but you know. Um, sure, we can vote for five.
Either way, it's fine with me. I'll go with them.
Director Saunders?
If I would, uh. Vote for the five. And remember, we're all eligible to attend these meetings as well. So. Even if you're not on the board, you can, uh.
In the next, the next meeting is the third of February. I, I would say that if you vote, then you look like you were in unison with the, the direction and the will of the. Mountain counties. If you decide not to vote, then you, you just. You're not necessarily.
One of our new commit, uh, new groups we just.
This is not.
That we've been.
For several years. You're gonna be a member, you should vote.
It looks like, uh, all in favor. Of.
Oh, we've had motion.
Motion, motion.
We did have a motion from Stovall. I believe we could consider Stevens.
Well, mine's a second.
All in favor of voting for all five. Uh, any opposed? Motion passes five, zero, all five.
It's a public comment.
Oh.
Who quit? Public's not paying attention.
All five to be elected as. For the directors. For the mountain counties.
Now, they do do good events. So I do recommend if you don't attend the meeting to try to attend their events, but, um. They do represent us in our area and, uh. The last one that we had in association with Aqua at Murphy's was pretty good. So.
Hmm.
And, uh, we'll try to see if we can get one in this area that's a county. So.
Think we're gonna, uh, last time I spoke with, um.
Justin?
Justin, yeah, I was trying to think of his name. Uh, we may be doing it with, uh, another local agency. And sponsoring with, um. Maybe, uh, either E I D. Or, uh. Or it's two. And we, we're, we're looking to. Have one in the, in the local area.
Okay, then. Um, action item H C Sweetwater Treatment Plant S T P Valve Mitigation Surging Issues.
Okay, so this issue is, it's, this is part of our C I P and. Um, I, it is within my signing authority to increase the cost of this. However, I wanted to make sure that the board was brought along. And understood, uh, when we originally budgeted it for this in the C I P, it was. Uh, approximately eighty thousand dollars is what we estimated. Um. Cost. Uh, the cost, the, uh, the. The cost change came in. A little bit higher than that. So I would like to turn it over to Adam. I believe we also have our engineer. On the call for questions on this if, if need be. So. Adam, if you go ahead and.
What was your signing authority? Fifty thousand?
Forty thousand.
Forty, so this is fifty, okay.
Yeah, so just a little. Just a little additional detail, um. We have three lift pumps there that transfer, you know, one, the finished water up to Angel Camp tank. Um, there's resonance between the treatment plant and Angel Camp tank. And as that was pumped, kicked on and off, we get, um. Pressure swings. We do have a surge anticipator valve there now, but just it can't handle the kind of swings. Um, so. This is the, the solution. They're, um. Pump control valves. They go at each pump and they. Combined with our SCADA to as the pumps come on, pumps go off, they. Open up slowly and close slowly to, to mitigate that issue. And there's, you know, there's two reasons for that. One is our infrastructure, you know, those pressure swings, we're gonna, we're gonna. Our lake trails has a lot of old pipe in there. We're gonna start going in. We know Kit Box, we know of Angel Camp, those recent, um, repair jobs that last, uh, three years or so. So. To mitigate those, then also customer complaints, you know, we get customers calling in where they're, you know, taking a shower and the shower turns off. Goes back on, so, um. The two step process, the first step is to have the valves installed. And second would to be have variable frequency drive motors. And install. We have those at Walton already, um, due to. You know, I wasn't around during the construction, the development of this, but you know, what I, what I know it was, you know, budget constraints is why they were not installed originally. Um, so that would be the second part. So I think we would do the valves now and then every year do one of the motors. With convert it to V F Ds, maybe we'd have. A lot of, uh. Operational flexibility and. Protect our infrastructure during, you know, day to day operations. Um, so like Nick said, you know, the C I P is, the prices came in a little higher than we in, originally anticipated. So that we're bringing it to. Show that, that additional cost, um. We have the technical memo from. Bennett Engineering. So we worked with Bennett to make sure this is the right solution. So we don't have to go back. On it and we're gonna do something different. So this is, you know, a lot of heads came together to, to make this, uh, recommendation. Back up what, what we're doing.
Director Denver?
Does a control system that's there now have the capability to control a V F D?
It does. We had, but you have, you have to get the right, you have to convert it over. The pumps there will work. You have to have the V F D controller and those. Convert that over to a V F D pump.
No, I understand that part, but you have to have something control the V F D.
Yeah, SCADA will do that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Director Seaman?
You have the, uh. The street addresses of those that are affected, cause I wanna make sure there's one resident who, uh. With these swings is always, uh, getting a blowout. I wanna make sure that this is. If he's not in this area, then we'll still have to figure out what's going on with this. So if we have a listed, you know, this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, um. Most of, most of, um, from Third Gate out to Secret Lake, kind of north of Angel Camp. That's actually.
Seaman?
So, um. So we currently do not have V F Ds running now?
No. I know. I know. We've, 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 we've been able to. Use a programming to, um, ramp them up and down, but you can't enough. You can't do it enough without V F Ds. Yeah.
We are going to be adding it as part of our C I P for next year. So we can't do it this year just due to cost. But, yeah, it's something that, um. I.
They originally.
Yeah, cause you need a V F D and then, then, uh, kick the manual so you can.
It was originally back to the V F D. And then as Adam stated, it was, uh, changed during the construction process.
It was a change during the prescription?
No, I think it was.
During the design.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Oh. Question. I know that there's gonna be, or there are funds for grants for possibly protect the check, protecting the infrastructure. Would it be appropriate to include this? On a potential future grant? This one would not necessarily qualify for many grants. It, there, there may be some that would qualify for. But this is a change we need to make now. And I, I don't think. But most grants, you can't spend money before, uh, you apply. So we can apply for the VFD grants, and we can try to get one, you know, moving into next year. But I think this one is, is something where we wanted to make this change now, that answers my question.
Being like grants, like, isn't there an energy efficiency thing in those VFDs?
Correct.
New motors on and VFDs would actually reduce the, uh, consumption of electricity running them.
Yeah, I think we can explore it and, and see how we can do that. I don't know if it's gonna be enough of a savings to warrant a, a grant for giving a grant is the problem. When you see those energy efficient grants, you, you have a large kilowatt of change, but we can assess. The amount of kilowatts that we'd be saving and, and we can apply, there's, doesn't hurt to, to ask, all I can do is say no.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, you know, VFDs, I mean, the whole point of those is to run the motors more efficiently and effectively, and then having the valves on them too.
I, I think you're doing some drought, drought granting, so we may be able to.
Okay.
Toss this one in with the drought.
Yeah.
Adam? The, um, break set we had the last few years in ALT is just directly.
Uh, the over time, yeah.
All those broken pipes and.
And there's definitely correlation there, your surging issues, you know.
Mr. Dunn?
Years ago, when all this, you know, starting Sweetwater Treatment Plant, all the discussion, and everything like that, all the engineers. We all had questions about this pumping, you know, all the pumping and pumps and everything. And I know Cherie has a question about pumping uphill, and, uh, and how come the engineers didn't have this figured out back then? We had to look in, thousands of dollars for engineers, and engineers here and there, and everybody's getting paid big bucks, and these guys couldn't figure this out. I don't understand.
I think to answer your question, there was, this was originally anticipated, but there was cost changes, and so, uh, I believe. That would be my assessment. I don't think it was the engineers who picked us, I believe it was the previous board.
Well, that's why we didn't get sold.
That's why we didn't require them.
I, I, I think you made a good choice. Anything from the engineer?
Dave, you want to add anything to that?
We know David.
Hi, Board, um, I, I don't really have much to add, I do just want to say that, um, in talking with your operators, those VFDs. Um, would definitely help extend the life of the motors, you know, they're the, the big ticket item there for your pumps. And, um, definitely will give them those, that operational flexibility to utilize more than. Uh, utilize the two larger motors as opposed to the, the smaller motor in some of our, our lower demand times, um. But these, these valves are really, um, part of the reason that, that we're leaning, you know, we, we've decided that the valves are needed, it is because they have a pretty quick turnaround. And Clay Valves are a very reputable company that is going to, um, you know, custom fit these to the, what we have, uh, in place there, so. Um, it's a good solution and, um, yeah, that, that's really all I have, have to offer.
Uh, Bennett Engineering, he's our district. Actually, Dave, what is your new company name, it's Bennett and something else, man?
Uh, uh, it's Bennett Engineering and YNC Transportation, um, we just, uh, acquired a firm that does like traffic signals and things like that. Because our company also does transportation work as well as water resources and staff augmentation, city engineering type, type of work, so.
So you basically.
We're expanding.
A new company name in, uh, check report, so if you are, or who is.
I made the Dave card, and so if his name shows up.
It does not show.
I, I approve the invoice, that's, that's the only place I'll see my name.
I guess a general question on the name, I thought it was named Sweetwater because that was the street, and it shouldn't be Sweetwater Water Treatment Plant? Isn't that what it?
Technically, yes.
When they voted on it?
Yes.
They were using the street.
We want to make a whole new.
Um, I, 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 we can.
If whatever was sent to the state.
I don't think that it makes a difference in the staff report, but we can make sure we.
I wanted it called Greenwood, but nobody could.
We already know STP was sticking with that.
Same, we save the whole soap.
Yeah, and another letter.
Adam? It said, uh, when the, when the pumps turn on, there's an immediate surge of water into the pipes, which can result in hammering, or it does?
Does. Can, it doesn't, yeah, because it doesn't. Uh, it would be in our pipes, I can, if this terminology I meant to use there.
And this extra fifty thousand dollars. The deferred or partially deferred by next year's CIP.
Um, so our CIP, we haven't, um, it's, our CIP is, is due to the fire has been a, a little bit changed. So we're gonna incorporate it and into our, uh, CIP budget as, as in lieu of another project. And so we're going to reassess at the next meeting, um, where we see the CIP moving forward for the rest of this, the year. And how we can incorporate this into our CIP budget, so the budget won't go up, it won't be offset next year, it'll be done this year, and we're gonna basically lose another project. There are projects, uh, such as canal lining, that we don't anticipate being able to do because of the fire. And we have other projects that we're doing as a result of the fire and other things.
Well, we probably set aside the water wheel one too. So we can. The water wheel one?
Oh, we're not doing the water.
Or, or if like a CIP doesn't come to full cause, right, so if we estimate a hundred fifty or something, we only do a hundred.
So these are inside the plan.
Correct. Right.
And, uh, how does that relate to your signature authority for spending, how does that?
It's over, I, I, I.
How does that affect if it's?
Oh, it doesn't. You vote for it, we're, we should be good to go. It's approved at the eighty thousand level because of the CIP, with the additional costs, I think it's important that the. The board is made aware of these additional costs and, or full transparency, I think it's important that the board approves this, uh, increased cost. And, and, you know, most of the increased costs, I would say, are coming from, you know, inflation and supply chain issue. But it's, it's not something that we could have anticipated when we, uh, when the original CIP was formed.
Can we keep these old parts, do they be used all at Walton or anything?
Um, it's, it's, it's all in the straight, straight pipe, they're not, there's nothing there, it's just a straight pipe, yeah.
I mean, we could keep them if we have a major blowout, but I would say, you know, we're not gonna throw them away or anything.
Yeah.
No, we're not gonna do it. If anything, we would sell them or something, you know, make some of our.
Are they brass or no?
Metals, you know. It's a KELIS, I believe.
Okay, then, so the recommended action is to.
We need a motion?
Yeah. The board approved the adjustment of the cost, okay.
So I'm gonna go, just, uh, remind the board that when we, uh, with our CIP budget moving forward, as we look to all, all the changes and fire mitigations, when we grew it next year. You have to be cognizant of all the changes we do, so we're never, uh, over budget in our CIP, so. I recommend that we, uh, authorize the changes and then, uh, we're gonna be reviewing our CIP in the upcoming months.
Okay, so motion was made by Director Saunders to accept the changes and review it in the coming months, CIP.
I'll second it, but I would have used a lot less words.
Seconded by Director Seaman, um, all in favor?
I, I.
I, motion passes five and zero, the additional cost for the valves. My next item, um. Item, item AD, review options for Kelsey School seasonal water use.
So at the last meeting, there was a public comment from, uh, Karen Bartolomeo, and, uh. She is a representative of the Kelsey Community Association. And, um, as a staff, we met to discuss potential options that we can, uh, taking direction from the board. Uh, the staff met to bring potential options for the Kelsey School. Um, in meeting. The, it's unfortunate, there's not a lot we can do, um, unless the board gives us. Further direction than this, but it would be setting a precedent that, um, I would say we may not want to get into. But that's always, uh, at the discretion of the board, but the three options that we determined, the first two could be done together, they're not, these are not independent of each other. Um, the first option is our LIRA program, um, could be applied to the. Organization, the association, due to there being a five oh one C three nonprofit, so they are. In my estimation, would be considered a low income provider or low income customer. Um, that would provide a twenty-five percent discount on their base charge, it works out to be about fifteen dollars, sixty-four cents a month?
Forty, fifteen, forty-four.
Fifteen forty-four, uh, representing a, an approximate yearly savings of ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Now, is this the, the, the major thing that they wanted, probably not, but it's a start, so. What we're asking is if the board would like to approve that based on there being a five oh one C three, that would be, uh, where we're, uh. If they would like to, uh, option B, the Kelsey Community Association could be provided information. To apply for the LEWAP program, which is low income household water. Something program, assistance program, excuse me, which is a, a low income program for the county, the county has several. Hundreds, sends a, several tens of millions of dollars that they're looking to spend moving forward on bills, uh, it would, it would be, um. Upon their approval, that they could have their bills paid for, uh, there would be no guarantees, and this would be outside of our control, this is a community controlled program. And then option C is something that we considered, uh, would be potentially removing their meter, um, when it's not in use, and then reinstalling their meter when they wanted to go back into use, but. As we, uh, noted in the staff report, it would actually create a net loss to the district, or the association, excuse me, of approximately sixty dollars, and that has to do with. They would save approximately two and a half months of, of billing service charges. Which is, it'd be approximately two hundred twenty-five dollars, and then our meter reinstallation fee is two hundred eighty-five dollars. Um, and that would be, uh, kind of a net loss for the association, so. Uh, as you can see, the fiscal impact for these, these three options is, uh, for option A, uh, we would lose approximately. Uh, six, ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents, but it is also a, an existing program that we have that helps these lower income. Customers, option B would be no cost to us, but it would provide a fully paid bill through the community association. And that would be something where we could, uh, give them the information as to how they could apply, uh, and then option C would be a net gain of sixty dollars, but. Uh, I, I just include that option to, just to know that we talked about it, but I wouldn't recommend applying, approving that one. So I think our staff recommendation is to approve, um, option A for this, uh, association, uh. Also approve option B, which would be giving them the application process for, for moving in with the LEWAP program, um. And that would just require the board to accept option and give us direction for option B.
Is, is that option, is that option A setting the precedent?
No, option, um. Uh, yes, option A is, excuse me, yes.
Are they actually low income, or we make, we?
There are five oh one C three, so nonprofit, I, I, I would say the precedent would be, uh, if, if the board were to, uh. Waive their bill or waive their service charge any more than this, which is also an option. But that would be something where I wouldn't want to set the precedent of waiving any part of their bill this, beyond what our programs, the programs we are having this.
So, so for clarification, uh, is so a five oh one C three is not considered?
It does not, it's not, doesn't, uh, the wording.
Single family home.
The wording of our UBERA program, it, it, it doesn't really fit, so, a little bit of a precedence, but.
Okay, okay.
If, I would say nonprofit, if, if we could. Kind of put it in that category, but it doesn't necessarily.
Okay, okay, we're pushing it a little bit.
Okay, so, yeah, nonprofit doesn't mean low income or anything, right, so then they are not for profit, so that would just end with a situation that. Any five oh one three C could apply for that fifteen dollar reduction or whatever.
And that's, well, it's actually more, it could potentially be more the larger their meter, so that's why I, it is a precedence.
Yeah.
There, there, there is a precedence, but there's also even additional precedents that could be set, and so I would.
And, and another option is they could apply at El Dorado. El Dorado County Community Foundation.
Love me the LEWAP would be there, the same idea.
Same idea, but this would be another option for them to go with rather than it, having us set a precedent.
Correct.
Um, so that would be my recommendation. You got two more fingers than.
Where did the two eighty-five come from, I've got, unless I'm mistaken, I thought it was supposed to be like a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty bucks to reset a meter.
No, it's the cost of the meter.
No.
That's.
We've had that conversation. You can't, you can't, excuse me. This, the replacement meter. Doesn't reflect how much the meter costs. Okay, it's replacing the meters, labor to go put the meter in, and if you look at when this was all set up, as far as. The customer wouldn't be charged the monthly service if they had their meter pulled. It was specifically said in there, this is how much it'll cost to replace the meter, and it was left a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty bucks. And when you're replacing the meter, the customer's not paying for the meter, the customer's never paying for the meter, other than what is initially put in, maybe.
It's true.
So, so it should only be what.
Was it?
Do you remember you said that to me just recently?
Yeah, I thought, I thought the reinstallation fee was one fifty.
Yeah, right, and that.
Was that like seven, an hour in?
It's a service, it's basically a service.
Yeah, was it seventy-five hours?
There's no, there's no cost to the meter involved in it at all.
That's for, that's for water showers, that's another, yeah, we're actually updating our service fees.
Yeah, so.
The five days.
He's out of office. What is the, well, anyone?
It's our labor charge for.
I'm not done yet.
Right, so you're not done?
I'm not done.
Continue.
Okay, well, I'm waiting for.
So I can, um, we can table this and I can bring that information back, um.
Well, that would change how much money they're gonna save.
No, no, you're right.
Significantly, so.
Adam was the one that told me it was two eighty-five.
Yeah, so that's, we're going on basically what it would cost if sell a meter, if there's a less charge because they're not buying in a meter every time, then we could, we could, we could explore that option.
Well, that, well, we kind of have to go with what we, what we told, what we said, what the board then said. The way this whole avoid the base charge process worked, you can avoid the pre, base charge if you have your meter removed. And then to reinstall the meter, it would be X amount of dollars, like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty bucks.
I would have to look back, because that's before I.
Right, because we weren't talking about buying a meter every time.
Well, no, you know, the customers aren't buying it.
Right, well, that's what I need.
Yeah, so.
So why would you buy it here?
Yeah, and, uh, so, and I think that. You know, we, we need to get that straightened out, because I think that would make a difference.
Sure.
And as far as the, them going to the county, that, I think you even said, that's got nothing to do with us, that's, they have to do that.
Provide them the information and the.
Yeah, which, yeah, pretty much is nothing, so, uh, I think that's what we should look at doing, is to be a combination of B and C. Because then we're not, we're not, if we do anything other than that, then, and I'm all in favor for the, I, I used to. Do stuff for them all the time years ago, um, I'm all in favor of helping out Kelsey School House, but we cannot. Be in a situation where we're gifting public funds, or we're setting a, a precedent that, that we don't want to set. And I think that if we go with option B and find out what the actual amount to replace the meter would be, then consider option C. And they just have it pulled when they, when they don't want to, when they don't need the water, have it put in again every year.
Yeah, that would be, I, if you want to table it until after the public hearing, you can maybe have that answer, or we can just bring it back at the next board meeting, but.
That's up to you.
You want to have more discussion.
Yeah, were, were you gonna answer his question?
No.
Well, then. And, I don't know, okay, go ahead.
Staff can't cut me. Well, I attended the LEWAP, um, mean, there was an update for our water organizations, um, you couldn't see who was on the call, but where, did you attend that as well?
I didn't attend that.
Okay, so they had a LEWAP update for two thousand twenty-three, um, they did tell us how much fund they had available to them, but they updated the program, so. Um, my understanding is that they're, they're not a hundred percent devoted to low income. Um, because we've had some customers that are not low income receive help from their organization, so they have two programs, one is a re-Regis program and one is a. Um, like a pay-for program, so you can only apply for one, you can't do both, and it's only once a year. So what they could do every single year, and this, I didn't know about this when the staff report was created, um, my suggestion would be for them. Is they don't pay their bill when they're done in November, so it's November to April, their water may get locked off, but they're not there anyway. Is that they have an, a, a pay it forward program where they can estimate the cost of what their fees would be, and we would know because it's the base charges. And they would pay forward however many months for them, and then there'd be a. And they would pay forward however many months for them, and then there'd be a credit on their account, they wouldn't be locked off. So every November they could apply for this LIWAP, they can even do it now. And they could project how much money they would need, that money gets sent by LIWAP to us, we put the credit on their account. They're not at risk of being shut off because the there's a credit. And then when they resume activities, then they resume their normal bill paying and then hopefully this program goes next year and they can continue to do that.
But they can incorporate that with. Right, and they, but they can incorporate that with having their meter pulled.
Correct, and I already did suggest the meter pulling and I.
Yeah.
Was met with a lot of resistance.
Yeah, by who? By Karen?
Yeah, they go intermittently, they're just not having functions.
They do have some meetings and stuff.
It'd probably be better to get that. The other thing I was gonna ask you, that is.
Sorry, I had, I wanted to make sure I got the information before we left. According to our June meeting, which is again before I was here, that is the new charge.
I think that's when all the fees were raised.
The meter?
The meter installation charge is twenty-five to do a new meter between if I plus the new meter.
Yeah, I think we.
We can, we can look into it.
Yeah, that's not the way I remember it going. I remember we had a big discussion about that.
Shereen's gonna look it up.
I would be happy to. I would, I would recommend we maybe table it.
Okay.
And we can bring it back at the next meeting and I can update that information unless I.
And and she brought up a variable that you may not see aware of that too.
Um when I attended the LIWAP update that they have an arrearage program now, but they all, they are in arrearage program. But they've added a pay it forward program. You can estimate your bills going forward and they'll put a credit on your account. The other part of that too is the reason they brought that up and was very specific on it was because. If your customer moves and closes their account after they've received those funds, they get the refund. The credit balance on the account sent to them, we don't have to send it back, but if we get the check. Or if the 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 customer's applied for the grant, moves and close their account before we've gotten the check, then we have to send it back. To LIWAP.
Thank you, Director Saunders.
The uh estimation of the bill, isn't it, is it two and a half billing cycles or two and a half months? I thought it was.
So yeah, it's 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 ninety dollars, it's like ninety-two dollars and then. Half of that is the forty-six.
Right.
That's where the the. Two hundred twenty-five dollars. And so I, you're a very good catch, things over there. And.
Um I did a search of the policies and I could find nothing that gives the board the authority to adjust individual property, property related fees. And if I recall, also Prop two eighteen does not provide any options for.
Our Lira program is the only thing we can do, so. It is a policy based on a single, it it's stretching, it is.
And as far as precedent setting, I have, I know of two families that live one day short of a half a year. Out of state, and so they could request that also. You know, if they didn't, if they weren't here six months, they move out of state for six months and a day, so they would be requesting that their meter. You know.
So they water their landscape? That's always been an option.
What he's saying is they could apply for low income.
Those that more realistically about. But I think, you know, the El Dorado Community Foundation is another avenue for them to look into and they should seek that out. That has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, that and the arrearage program may work for them because that lets them keep the water on and get that. Applied to them, so.
Yeah, and they could get that. For them, they have money to give out.
So are we through or should we?
You'd have to change the policy if you're giving them. A for one, because it is residential and it goes, you have to be on the care program. E G E or you have to bring in your income. And it does say residential, I mean, I'm all for them having less heat, but.
That's why.
They use it all year round, they just don't have their breakfast all year round.
Well, they don't have, they don't use hardly any water from November to.
Their flushing toilets, stuff like that. And they have meetings, but not.
So we're gonna uh.
I would motion to table it and we can bring back the fee.
I motion to table it.
Motion, no opposed?
No.
We have four in favor, one opposed, motion passes. Table it four to one.
And that's it, once it's tabled, there's no more discussion, so.
And it's item ninety.
All right, next item is public hearing. Second reading of the ordinance, amending and replacing ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh two, theft of water and tampering with district facilities.
So this is uh with uh first reading, we're back last month, we did have um some adjustments. I'm going to waive the reading. Um of this is ten pages, um I will highlight that the. Major changes of the are the an increase in. Fees and this is as a result of SB four twenty-seven, which is a California Senate bill. That was passed in twenty-one, twenty-two legislative cycle. That uh allowed these fees to be raised and it is to discourage water theft. It's actually from a local district here that was the sponsoring agency, but in section. The major changes come in section. Section three. Yeah, section three and. You'll note, if you'll note, section three, uh subsection B, one, two. And three, change our original fee structure. To the new fee structure of a hundred and thirty dollars for your first violation, seven hundred dollars for your second violation. And third violation is one thousand three hundred dollars and every violation thereafter, so this will be within a twelve month period. And then section three C, that is for a meter tampering, the first one in the section three C is for water theft. That does not involve meter tampering, so that would be like a fire hydrant or out of our canals. That would be uh one thousand dollars for your first violation, two thousand dollars for your third violation and three thousand dollars and then every violation thereafter. Um for your, for a twelve month period. The reading, the reading, um less uh. We would like to hear it, but it is ten pages.
Is there any uh fine for metering, meter tampering at this point in time?
There is a fine, um unfortunately, our our original theft ordinance is actually uh illegal. Because of the, it's a one fifty, so it's higher, our first violation is higher. But our second violation is two fifty and third violation is three fifty. So this is to encourage, to discourage a continued meter tampering. And uh just to know, we did, we did have a customer uh that. Had multiple violations of this. So moving forward, we would have been able to have had a greater. Stick that we could have used.
It's not retro, there's not a.
Not retro from. Will not take effect for thirty days after today.
That's why you put me over here, so you.
That way and then he loses this.
Now, just adding, we took out the up to which was um, so it's not a discretionary, so that was the only thing that changed then. Just to let everybody know, the numbers mirror what's in the bill, so we're just following.
And there's no, there's no caveat, uh that was. Uh board members even noted the not have the words up to. Uh so we removed the words up to it in this ordinance reads exactly how those second bills reads.
So. First, adopting your hurts, do we need to take a motion? How does that go?
Correct, a motion, yeah, a motion to accept and then it will uh. Move on. There's gonna be a roll call, once a motion is made, a roll call.
Oh, we have to do the public.
So they can, there are a couple of different ways you can put in a stuff.
Why are we explaining how to bypass it?
Does somebody have a motion to?
You have to open up a public.
Public hearing.
We have to open up a public hearing, but there's a, there's a little thing you read in here.
Oh, and you gotta hit a gamble or something, I think.
Public hearing, second reading? Number nine, just read where it says second here, second reading.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three, amending and replacing ordinance twenty fifteen oh two. Theft of water and tampering with district facilities.
We're at five or forty-four.
Public hearing, opening at four forty-four. Uh, public comments?
Since they're not stocking and opening up the meters, how are you gonna know somebody tampering, gonna do every six months spot checks or?
Mostly people that are locked off.
Well, yeah, but I mean, anybody, if they start figuring out their electronic, you know, people get.
Yes, if we start to see egregious bills, we will build that.
That's the other purpose of the drone.
But the other thing is all of the AMRs, we do digital downloads, you can see how much water they use every single day.
But yes, we will also do spot.
You know, I mean.
Yes, I I totally agree. So then you say you close the public hearing?
Public hearing is now closed. At one four forty-five P M. And that's it.
And then I think, then you, now you vote on it.
So I made a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
My second, okay, got a motion from Director Saunders to. For passing this ordinance, twenty twenty-three, we got a second by Director Thornborough.
And let's take a roll call, so.
Roll call boat?
Five to zero.
Not accepting friendly amendments.
Right, move along, we still got a close session to do.
Okay, uh well, it's after any, any board members like to add make Mr.
Yeah, given uh. Our action last time about the leak um policy. I'd like to do look into revising the leak consideration policy. Have uh ten copies of the recommendations I had. It's basically to include the people who want to approach the board for leak consideration. Be enrolled in the Water Smart Program, so they're aware that there is a.
Does that need to go next before the policy?
That's a good idea.
Yes, so we'd have to go to.
If it has to go to the board, may have to go to public.
I would not hand it out to the board just yet. And then I will B C C it to the, all right, you wanna?
Email a copy?
I will email a copy, yeah, please, because you can't uh. Yeah, you can't be very careful when you send out emails to the entire board. Because if you do that, it could become a potential Brown Act violation.
Then it should go to the committee. The policy committee.
Yes, I will, I will remake the review and then we'll send it to the policy committee and then we can make a investment, yeah. And I'll email this to you, okay, thank you.
All right. Any additions to the agenda, agenda for next meeting?
No, I think I'm good right now.
I do have one, an item that we cannot work on, I've brought this up before, so this is with our continuing uh. Communications with our uh drought water conservation efforts and this is to go to the schools, so they come up with a. We have a competition or something, so they can name our mascot.
Very started on that and so um we have employed uh Adam Brown, uh who's a, his wife is a teacher. We have a new mascot and uh you'll get to see our new mascot soon, probably at the next couple of board meetings, maybe, we'll see. It'll be a special surprise, maybe they'll hop through the door like the Kool-Aid Man. Uh yeah, we do have a new uh a new hunter mascot that will be able to utilize at the. You know, uh Founder's Day, at you know, other events that we do around the community. Um and we're going to bring that mascot to the school and we're gonna have the school vote on a potential name, so. We can kind of make it fun and encourage the students and the rest of the community to uh name this.
Good, uh I had one comment or question, did you comment on the status of the investment company?
Oh, I did not, and I I apologize, I was, I meant to make an announcement during my report. We did not receive any uh at the initial reading, I did resubmit and. Uh forwarded on to several companies who have since submitted some RFPs, so. Unfortunately, we did not receive one the first go around, but we have received them on their second go around, which will be due at the end of this month.
What did you change to get them?
I did not change anything, I did a little more targeted though. Targeted search, that's the way, yeah, I sent it out to a few companies. I don't think it was as widely read because of the holidays.
Okay. All right, um next item is the closed session.
We pause this meeting and then we come back.
I have just one question, is that Craig versus Jeep had an actual file?
You did not get to know.
Well, usually when they name it, it's a.
Listen in at the end when we give the. Sorry.
So I have to close the meeting.
One thing.
But there, there can be public comments to it before.
Okay, so. Okay, so meetings adjourned goes to closed session.
It's not, the meeting's not adjourned, just. It's not adjourned, the meeting is moved to closed session.
Okay.
Okay, so there's nothing to report on.
We need to open the door if somebody.
Let me, let me just make sure that nobody here. Ms. Carroll? Okay. So uh coming back into session at five fourteen.
Meeting's coming back into session at five fourteen after the closed session. And there is nothing to report out from either. Of the two uh pending litigations.
And that should do it, whether we can uh. Next meeting.
The next meeting will, regular meeting will be held Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, is it right? Yes, at uh two P M. At Georgetown, somebody said that earlier, it wasn't, but.
Yes, it's the.
Okay.
It was wrong for the previous meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, so um it. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
Close to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.
You did a great job.
We can, we can stop.
And now you guys, stay safe in all this rain and snow.
Okay. Okay, so, so when I went, when I went to close session, then they said, no, you need to adjourn the meeting.
We just said move into close session. I usually say adjourn, but.
But not meeting adjourned.